Good night, everybody, or good afternoon. This is Monday, April 30th. It is 4:30 PM in the Thomas J. Smith Council Chambers. This is a work session tonight, so if you are not on the agenda and have not been invited up, we will not be entertaining an extra conversation tonight. That will be next week. We're going to roll right downhill, but before I do get started, I'd like to open up this meeting with a poem. Man, the excitement is overwhelming. "A Piece of a Puzzle." I am a piece of a puzzle, a puzzle that should be considered as different, not a puzzle that has to be fixed, even if some or most pieces are difficult. We don't understand social interaction, so sometimes we prefer to be alone. Some of us can't or won't talk. We have emotions, but we don't know how to show them. We think in pictures, not words. We often say what we think out loud. We are slow to respond to questions or orders. We are sensitive to certain sounds. We don't like to be touched, not even a little bit, or by accident. We're born this way. People who don't understand or aren't patient can hurt or harm us, kids at school, teachers who don't have experience, even our own parents. We can now be determined to be a piece at 18 months old, but we can't be discovered during our childhood. Some of us don't even know they're a piece until adulthood. For one girl, there are four boys. Each piece is different. The puzzle is a spectrum, and it expands every day. You can't tell we're a piece by looking at us, only by how we behave is when you can suspect. Some of us have special talents. April is our month. It's when we can be recognized. April is Autism Acceptance Month. And this poem was written by Isabel Skank. She is, I think, 11 or 12 years old, and this is, I thought I would close with this, this is the last day of April, and I wanted to read this a couple of weeks prior. I didn't have it, but I wanted to say thanks to Isabel, and just be mindful of all the people out there that have autism. All right.
There you go.
Okay, we're going to have some Mayor's Awards and some Proclamations for Municipal Clerks' Week, Emergency Medical Services Week, and the 50th Anniversary of Municipal Home Rule. We have a presentation by Alliant Annual Report. Nancy Snott will be here. Number four is a public hearing, consideration of an ordinance creating Chapter 163(a), junk vehicles of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Burlington, Iowa. That'll be the first reading on that. Mr. Teslin.
This is a new section of code based on the changes that are being presented from Chapter 163, Environmental Nuisances. Currently, there's a section in there that addresses vehicles, junk vehicles. There's no real clear method that lays out the data process for vehicles. It is not very well defined in our existing code. So this code, upon review by staff and attorney, was recommended to better lay out the process to handle and deal with junk vehicles. So it does define what a junk vehicle is in reference to Section 321 of the Code of Iowa, where maybe inoperable, obsolete vehicle, abandoned vehicle, or nuisance vehicle. This code only applies to private property. It does not apply to public property. Vehicles on public roadways are handled by the police department. Vehicles on private property are handled as a nuisance. Part of this, with the notice to abate, Section 163(a) point 07 states, "The nuisance official shall notify in writing the owner of the property upon which the vehicle is located and the order of vehicle known that vehicle constitutes a nuisance." Nuisance notice shall be delivered personally by priority mail with delivery confirmation receipt or certified mail return receipt requested. Has some of the same language about vehicles that are allowed, people that work on vehicles throughout the year. That language is carried over into this as well. It does better lay out process timeframe and notice for dealing with junk and abandoned vehicles on private property.
Counsel.
I have any questions?
Everybody's good? Okay. Number five, motion for preliminary adoption of a second reading of an ordinance amending Chapter 163, Environmental Nuisances of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Burlington, Iowa. Mr. Teslin.
So some discussion at the council meeting last week, a couple of the items are listed in the packet as potential amendments to Chapter 163, as highlighted in yellow. Two of the ones discussed by counsel, Chapter 163.05, right of entry for inspection. Language was added that for entry, it must be based upon the appearance of a nuisance or condition which makes such building or premise unsafe as defined in the Code of Ordinances. That mirrors, or closely mirrors, the existing language in Chapter 165, that talks about right of entry for a code inspector as a reasonable cause. There exists a building condition that makes such building or premise unsafe as defined in the Code of Ordinances. So with this, the right of entry for inspection, this is not a new section to our city code. We still, whether this is in the nuisance section or not, we still have right of entry. That's not just a blanket right that we can walk up and walk into someone's home without giving notice. We still have to give notice. We still have to ask permission to enter the home, and they can still deny us entry into the home. If they do deny it, we would have to seek a warrant. None of that has changed. That's our current process, and that's staying with this process. It's just clearly laid out and defined within this section of code, within the nuisance code. If you looked at Chapter 165.15, right of entry under code inspection, section of code, existing code, as well as 165.16, refusal to permit inspection, this language mirrors that, as I stated, is currently in our code. It's just pulling that over into the nuisance section, so it's clear when we have that ability. If there's a nuisance or condition that makes a building unsafe, we want entry to ensure that the property is or is not in an unsafe condition and then to handle it appropriately. But again, if they do not have to allow us in, if they do not, we should seek a warrant to gain that access. Any questions on that, or any language recommendation or comments?
No, thank you for changing it.
Yeah, I just have to say this, and I won't labor with it, but I don't like 163.05 and 163.06 at all, period. There's nothing in it that I like, and I just think it's a dangerous ordinance. I know that it was already an ordinance, but it was one that I hadn't seen before. And to enter into somebody's home, I don't like it. So I just think that the council needs to be mindful of what they're reading and to really give it some consideration. I don't think it's ever a right to just strong-arm somebody to go into their home and then to give a warrant because of a nuisance. No, no.
Well, I think, though, I'm more comfortable with the unsafe, because if there's a hole in somebody's roof, something like that, then, you know, we need to make sure people are safe. So I'm a lot better with the change of wording than before, because before, if they had more power, the way I read it, they had more power than the police to go in.
Don't discount nuisances. I mean, at the end of the day, a nuisance can also lead to somebody getting hurt. So I think that's what the true spirit of it. I definitely don't want us to have the ability just to walk into somebody's property without going through the steps. I think regardless of whether the ordinance exists or not, those laws already exist through the state, so.
Just one note on this. If there's tall grass or trash in the yard, that's not where the supply is. We're not going to go into someone's home because there's tall grass or trash. It's because the structure appears to be unsafe, have nuisance conditions, where the roof is failing, or a porch is falling off, or the wiring's pulled away, that we feel that the building is unsafe by visual inspection. We need to verify and to be able to give orders to correct, comply, so that it isn't a hazard, whether it be fire, or structural, or otherwise, for those individuals that are residing there. This isn't a blanket, we see tall grass, now we want to go look through your house. That's not what this is. It would be to enter a house, the unsafe concerns for the actual structure of the house.
I just wanted to clarify. I'm looking at this, and I see what you're saying, I see what it is, but I'm looking at this and what this can be, what this can evolve into. So again, you know, I'm not going to scream about it, but I don't like it at all. I just want that noted, my friend. Anything about it? Counsel? Okay.
So the second sections was 163.0. We pulled in the section that talked about further notice may be provided, took out the language that says, "No further notice shall be required." It states, "The code official shall furthermore post initial notice upon the property providing or provide such additional notice as the code official deems appropriate under the circumstances." So with that, notice by publication, we still have to provide that initial notice posting. It is a shall. That even when we publish notice in the newspaper, we still are going to be posting that property initially, that there is a nuisance on there, as we are doing now. This isn't a change of what we're doing in practice now. It's just making sure what we're doing now follows the letter of our code.
Then you changed the wording, basically, for everybody that wasn't here before. You changed the wording from may to shall.
Yeah.
Okay.
So it's not just a publication, the newspaper, it's publication plus the initial posting shall be made on the property.
Everybody's good?
Yes.
Okay, let's move along.
The last one, sorry, it's kind of at the top, 163.03, nuisances designated. This was based on concerns from other residents. Mr. Chaney had concerns about, in the code it says, clippings may be considered nuisance, but I think the literal definition under him was he places grass clippings or other mulch around his plants or flowers, and that's not what we consider a nuisance. So we just wanted to clarify that to make sure it's clear to everyone. Clippings would be a pile of grass or other debris or twigs in your yard, not surrounding plants or flowers or anything like that.
Well, I appreciate the changes, because I think this, like a lot of ordinances, is going to depend on fair and appropriate enforcement, and that's what we hire our professional folks to do. So I'm good with the changes to clarify those positions, so thank you.
Was there any other, on review, any other sections that council questions are put on, or?
Those are the only ones I had.
I didn't see anything. I read it this morning, and it looked fairly complete.
Okay. Thank you, sir. Number six, motion for preliminary adoption of the second reading of an ordinance amending the Code of Ordinances of the City of Burlington by creating a new Chapter 100, Storm Water Management and Draining Systems Utility. Mr. McGregor.
Good evening. We will review the same PowerPoint presentation that I gave in the last couple of times. Just go back through it and let you know. So what we're doing is, is we are eliminating the previous or the current code for the stormwater utility. The current stormwater utility is fairly general, doesn't really set up a whole lot. So what we're doing is we're removing that and adding a new section of code. This stormwater utility is a model code from the Iowa Municipal Utilities Organization, and so what we did is we adapted that code to fit our methodology and then some of the language. So if you'd hit the next slide for me. So our current fee structure is set up annually by resolution. You can see that on the overhead projection. We have metered and unmetered residential, and then we also have impervious surface thresholds or groupings that we set for the commercial industrial. If you go to the next slide for me. So previously, we've also heard from Vintor and Kim, they did the stormwater utility feasibility study, and after we spoke with them, we believed that the ERU method, or the Equivalent Residential Unit, was probably the most equitable and the most usable in this situation. So what is an ERU? An ERU is a, it's a unit of measurement for impervious surface. Impervious surface is surface that does not allow rainwater to soak into. So the way they came up with the ERU was they took 150 homes, took the average number of what the impervious surface was, and that becomes, that is set as our ERU rate. And then that is applied to non-residential properties to determine its fee structure. And so this had $2.50. Our July 1st, $2.50 is what we currently charge in this fiscal year, per the increase that we've done for everything else by 3%. It would be $2.58. If you go to the next slide for me. This is a layout of the, you know, the number of properties that are in each category, and then the annual revenue based on the $2.50, and then the average monthly bill of what that would include. So if you'd go to the next slide for me. So why the ERU? I kind of touched on this a little bit. It's a little bit more equitable than the current way that we're doing things. A lot of the burden had been put on to residential property owners rather than industrial, commercial, the ones, the large ones with the impervious surface, and it's easier to manage with GIS data. If you go to the next slide for me. This is a cost comparison on what the old method to the new method means for property owners, non-residential, with ERUs being applied. So you can see there, rather than go through all of them, we had parameters that were set, so if you were $1,000 to $10,000, you were paying the same fee, and then $25,000 to $50,000, and then $50,000 to $75,000 square foot of impervious surface. And now you have more incremental dollar figures that people are paying. Some people will see some decreases, some people will see some increases, and there's some larger facilities that will see some fairly large increases, some of which is due to the fact of impervious surface calculations were not being calculated correctly underneath the previous means. They would have probably been paying a higher bill if the true calculations were there. They just, it wasn't being calculated correctly. We're basing it off building permits, and now these are based off of aerials, which aren't 100% accurate, but...
Did you hear anybody in that bottom, in that bottom group?
Yes, we have some of those.
$3.65 a month?
Correct.
Got a question for you, Nick. Big muddies. Building, you know, now with, they have concrete gravel around them, they don't have a sewer system. What do you do in that case?
A sewer system, a storm sewer system?
Yeah, there's not, I don't see...
There is no storm sewer, and there's some residences in town that don't have a true storm sewer system. They have ditches.
But it still runs through the street, it still ends up...
Correct. We still have storm water to deal with. We, as a community, still have stormwater network to take care of as a function, and as a section of impervious surface, places like that still contribute to the storm water that comes out of this town. So that's the philosophy on that. I think that, I have one more slide. I did, I had to put some examples up. So this is kind of the calculation methodology that they used. I mean, it's not 100% accurate all the time. It's pretty close, and so they just, they round up when they deal with the ERUs. And we will have this database on file moving in the future, so if someone were to have issue with the way that specific area is being calculated, should they take out a section of concrete, replace it with grass, that can be corrected. So I think I have a couple more. You know, Mr. Crowner had asked a question on what some of his properties were. I had that information, so I'm using it. You can see kind of what kind of impacts that is to some of the commercial and industrial properties in this neighborhood. So for instance, the one property at $10.32 was actually being charged $12.50 previously because of the limits of the boundaries of the properties that we had. And now this is more of a true cost of what they should be paying.
And how did you say, Nick, how was it historically calculated? You mentioned it.
Most of them were based on building permits.
Okay, building permits, thank you.
Yep.
She didn't always take into account paving areas.
Correct.
Sometimes it's just the actual building roof structure, not necessarily sidewalks or paving areas.
Nor any additions that were done to facilities.
How often, how often will these be updated outside of people applying for building permits or applying to have it reduced?
We probably need to do an audit every once in a while. Some of them have been, all the current counting has been done off of aerials, and aerials are done in this community every three years or so. So I would say that an audit probably should follow some of that.
Yeah.
So on GIS, all you'd have to do is, is this is, to get into the GIS terms, that's a layer, and all you'd have to do is bring in a new aerial, and you would, should be able to see where the differences lie. I mean, it's not going to be accurate all the time, but the GIS data points are pretty close to what they should be. I think I had one more map or image. Nope, that was it. I can answer any questions, make sure I filled in any of the gaps.
Counsel?
Okay.
Good. Thank you, sir. Number seven, resolution accepting the Surface Transportation Block Grant from Madison Avenue and Ninth Street. Mr. McGregor.
Good evening again. I'll be up here for the next couple of ones.
Just hang out, man.
I'll just chill. This resolution in front of you would approve accepting the funds for the STGB, the Surface Transportation Block Grant funds that we applied for December 2017. So in my memo, I discuss the ranking system. So Southeast Iowa Regional Planning has a committee that goes through and ranks all the STGB applications. There was a total of four. As you can see in the map, actually, I should probably give you this, so you can kind of see what's on there. This is the ranking. Doesn't have the scoring of the projects. I had that in another email. But this, Fort Madison's project of Business 61 was the first-ranked project. There was 1.2, there's $1,209,040 estimated of STGB funds for our region. As the first-ranked project, they were allotted, or will be allotted, $780,000, which means there is $429,040 remaining in available funds for STGB work. Should we accept these funds? I'll first talk. We had put in an initial grant request of $1.4 million for STGB funds. We are the second-ranked project. We have the ability to accept or deny these funds. If we accept, we have to fulfill the project as we applied, meaning the full extent of the project from Angular all the way down to Sunset, and the full extent of the project work, meaning full-depth reconstruction from Angular to South, and then everything that we talked about doing in the grant application, along with the bike lanes and removal of the parking on the section from South to Sunset. If we deny it, that pool of money goes back, and it goes to the third-ranked project, and then they have, they have the same options we do, or ultimately, if it never, if it doesn't get, does not get used, it'll go back to the pool of money for STGB. In my memo, I also talked about recommending accepting the funds. In that fiscal year, fiscal year '22, we have about $1.5 million budgeted. There's two other road projects along with Madison that I have, that we have allotted for in the five-year road plan. Parkway from South 14th to Summer, and then Oak from Central, or Sunnyside, to, I don't know, the eastern boundary. After I sat down and took a look at this, we would not be able to, if we didn't accept the funds, I think Madison is probably the most pressing need to be fixed in that timeframe. Oak Street is not in that bad of shape. Parkview, or Parkway, rather, might be able to be something we take on in a different year. It's not that length of an extent of project. One of the other things that has changed since the five-year road plan preparation was an estimate of the cost of what we were doing in that project scope. In the five-year road plan, it was just an asphalt overlay from Division all the way down to Harrison. In the application, and the way that I think it probably should be done, is a full-depth reconstruction from Angular to South. If you go through there, and I've had several staff members go take a look at it, and we think there's base issues there, so doing an asphalt overlay will look fine for a couple of three, five years, but after that, you'll start seeing that same reflective issue in the oncoming years. So I think that we need to go through and do it the right way and fix it with some concrete. So that cost is not realized in the five-year road plan anyway. You see that cost at the $1.8 million, and that number there is, has absorbed the Davis-Bacon, the prevailing wage requirement that previously had been applied. We now have found out, and there's been constant discussion with the DOT, on whether or not we can swap those federal funds out for state funds. We now have the ability to do that. It should always have been a discussion prior to, but now it's a reality that we can swap out federal funds for state funds. That means we don't have to do the Davis-Bacon requirement, which I've seen various different numbers on that, but between 10 and 20% of the overall project costs. And if you use the upper extent of that, that's $360,000 worth of added cost to that project because of Davis Bacon.
That Davis Bacon?
So that brings that overall cost down to about $1.5 million.
Nick, can you explain what that is?
Davis Bacon is a federal requirement for prevailing wages.
Essentially requires that any work that's done, Matt, the contractors have to document and verify that all of their employees meet those. It doesn't mean that you can let out the project without the Davis Bacon requirements. They may be paying those wage rates and they may not. You're just not mandating that they do it.
So there's a minimum that they're required to pay in order to meet that requirement?
Correct. A lot of documentation as well.
Other questions? Is Parkway, is Parkway really that bad? I mean, I drive down that street quite a bit, and I guess I've never, ever said to myself, "Man, this street really needs repairing." I would have said, the east side of Parkway, from 14th to Madison, was bad until we did the overlay last year. That street's great. I guess I've never really noticed it, so is there underlying issues there?
There's some cracking going on in there that we think we need to correct, and the biggest thing to keep in mind is this, these projects are four years out.
Right.
And so it's tough to analyze and see where that, where those, and that's why the five-year road plan always constantly changes, swaps out certain roads that are maybe in a little bit better shape, and other ones that deteriorate a little faster. It isn't really that bad. That's why I think that Madison is a much more of a priority. I think Oak Street is worse than Parkway.
What's the project total for the Parkway? Any idea?
I couldn't tell you. I should have probably brought that information.
So if we dropped the Parkway and went with the Madison, do you see that as being an equal give and take, or are we still going to have to come up with additional funding then at that point?
I couldn't tell. I'd hate to give you wrong information.
As far as you're dealing with projects and trying to fund road work, if you choose not to do, take the federal funds on this, regardless of anything else, it just pushes out other work that needs to be done. Long and short, we aren't getting enough work done to keep up with our roads.
Right.
And so regardless, we are always falling behind.
Which is why I'm not in favor of letting any money that's available to us go.
Correct.
Is this, the STB DG stuff, is that an annual application process?
It is.
So what projects, and maybe you don't understand this, is on the list to be the project that we apply for next year?
For next year, don't have that list right now. We will be getting the DOT, it's DTIMs, and I have no clue what that stands for, but they, it's the pavement condition index scoring that they do for us, and we'll have that information sometime this summer.
And then you'll be able to figure out what that project's going to look like and prioritize it.
And so this fall is when we start doing some road planning on the next year for the five-year road plan. We do that in October. And so between then and there, we should figure out what kind of roads we have being looked at to get replaced, four years out.
So to the Madison project, if we did not take the money, staff recommendation is still going to be to eliminate parking on that. Is that correct?
Well, it would meet what current SUDAS standards would say.
Because it's not white and not...
The one thing, if you were to deny the funds, is that you could shorten the scope of the project from, I would want to start from Angular and work your way south. The section between Harrison Street and Sunset on Madison is in much better shape than the rest of it. It was asphalted sometime before the section further south on Madison. So the section south of Sunset is in pretty good shape, but it's just that extent has seen a lot of patchwork over the few years, and so we've gotten it to work. It's in good condition as far as structurally. It's not the smoothest ride.
Are you saying, oh, sorry, John?
Well, follow-up. So the, thanks, Matt. The concern about the base on, between Angular and South, would that have any concerns with the sewer project we just ended up having to repair, because that's in the same general areas? Are worried about...
It is part of the sewer separation area that we will have to be doing here over the next 15, 20, 30 years. So it will be something that we'll need to probably take a look at. I don't think there's any sewers, I can't say that definitively.
No, I mean, that section, we just repaired. Is there any concern there's some washout from that area? Because that's the Truvady parking lot.
That's on the top side of it.
Okay. I didn't know there was any problem with that coming down.
And the project that we submitted for the grant involved, it wasn't an overlay, it was a re, it was a complete...
It was mixed. It was a mix of overlay and full-depth reconstruction.
And you're pulling that and saying, instead of doing that, we should just do a complete replacement?
No. What I'm saying is, is we follow what we applied for in the grant as far as that full-depth reconstruction from Angular to South, and then overlay the rest of it.
Man, I'm, it's not the perfect situation, but it's a whole lot of money to, to say no to.
I agree with you, Shane.
Yeah.
What is, we're supposed to spend 5 million a year, and we're spending 1, isn't that right?
You gotta think through, I mean, we have some other projects that are going on. And like, as an example, this year, we have, we're completing Agency Street West. We're gonna be doing Agency Street East. You can throw in the fact that we're doing Mount Pleasant Street Bridge, which is a higher-dollar amount. So it's not, it's not as if the 1.5 million that we bond for is the only street work we do, but we don't, we're still not getting up to that 5 million. I think it'd probably be fair to say that, on average, we're probably spending 3.5 million, maybe 4 million a year.
Because we also have some additional road use funds that my, that my streets and sewer staff uses to, to do some patching. So you're gonna start seeing some patching going on, and that same funds is also paying for it.
We are getting above that million and a half, but we're not getting up to 5 on an average basis. To your point, we're just not, we're not keeping up.
I mean, these are the type of grants that at least keep us within arm's reach of being in that number, so I'm with you, Shane. I don't wanna let it go.
And just to clarify, I mean, so there's no lost information, if we accept these funds, we have to do the project as applied.
Right on.
Which means removal of the parking.
Right on.
And then the bike lanes as well.
Yep.
Okay.
Thank you, sir. You gonna hang out there?
I'll just chill.
Next, we have a resolution to install a four-way stop at the intersection of Harrison Avenue and South Central Street, or maybe not. Talk to us.
Yes. There was a request for an installation of a four-way stop at South Central and Harrison Street. We took and processed the stop sign request. As I've discussed before, there's three warranty factors for, for a stop sign: traffic volume, accident history, and then line of sight issues. Harrison Street is considered a minor arterial and carries about 4,700 cars a day as of 2014. And then South Central is about 1,000, and then actually, the south side of South Central is much less. It's a residential. And there is currently a two-way stop for Central that abuts up against Harrison Street. There's been five traffic accidents in the last 10 years at this, at or near this intersection. And then there's a little bit of a line of sight issue on the south side of South Central going northbound. My recommendation is to, that is the reason why it's on the regular agenda, is my recommendation is to not install the stop sign. The call to put a stop sign on an arterial road such as this is only when it meets up with another arterial or a major collector, and I would not consider Central, at this point, a collector. That is the reason why you see a stop sign at Main, Madison, and then a stop light at Summer. Those are arterial roads that Harrison meets up with. It's fairly untraditional to put a stop sign up like this on an arterial road.
Capital suggestion. Counsel?
Can anything be done to improve that south line, the south sight line? Jeez, I can't talk.
I think it's a tree that causes a problem.
Is it a tree? A right-of-way tree?
I think it's a property owner tree that has some overgrowth. We could recommend that they trim it, or we could help do that, but that gets a little
Counsel? We good?
Does South Central turn into a collector at South and South Central?
South Central turns into a collector north of Harrison. South of Harrison, it's considered a residential street.
Okay.
If that makes sense. I hope it does.
Right. So have we asked the property owner if they would trim the tree?
Yeah, that was my question.
We've had some discussion with them. I don't know. We reached out to them, told them they would be on the agenda.
Okay.
And told them our stance, but I have not talked with the property owner.
Okay.
All right. Was there to, oh, one other question. Was there to be savings that was going to be realized through this?
A savings?
Yes, going from the, going to a four-way stop. Any type of savings?
No budget.
We don't have to put a stop sign in.
All right. I had to ask that question.
Stop signs cost a little bit of money.
All right. You guys good?
Yep.
All right. Next, we have a resolution awarding contract for the 2018 parking lot improvement, Sixth Street and Washington Street Lot. Mr. McGregor.
Wait for my slide to come up. So this is Main and Valley, or Sixth and Washington. We bid these two as a, not as a package deal, but simultaneously. The Sixth and Washington, we would recommend awarding contract to MG Daily as a, as a concrete job. You can see bid package number one was an asphalt overlay project. Because of the cost difference, concrete's a much better product. It is a little bit more expensive, but I think it's a long, what? I can't speak. A long laster, it'll last longer.
Yeah. Just 16 grand more.
I'm having troubles tonight. That's what I get for standing up here for a half an hour.
It happens to me all the time. We're waiting on you. Go ahead.
So that would be my recommendation, is to award to MG, MG Daily for Sixth and Washington.
Counsel? Jim?
Between these two, we, right now, in the parking fund, he mentions the sources of funds that are sitting in there. We've used a little bit of that for some engineering work, and I think maybe some overruns from the previous parking project. We have 106,000 sitting in the fund to do it. These two total, the two parking lots are about 180,000. Engineering on top of that, by the time we get that charged in, we'll end up about 205,000. So we're about 100,000 off. We can cover, within projects that are going on right now, that's, that's something that we had committed to getting done. In another one of his projects, he was buying two buses this current year. We had it budgeted to pay for that, one with grant, grant funding at 80 percent, or 85 percent. The other one, all our responsibility. We were awarded for full, or grant funding for two buses, so our match on that is significantly less, about 135,000 less. So we can use the savings on that to cover that. The only other, only other thing that I've got going on is Parkview Care Center was being funded out of the housing demo fund. And getting, we're gonna be close at the end of the year. I think that we're probably gonna need the other 35,000 out of this, the savings from the bus.
Do it.
To go into the housing demo, and that should put him right about zero for the end of the year. They do have the ability to sell those lots on the backside for, I mean, they're kind of projecting next year that they should be able to get 80, 90,000 from the sale of those, so that fund will get replenished. But we wanna make sure that we're able to be in a decent position at year-end there. It's close. One of the options that we had on this, about $36,000 of the cost on the Sixth and Washington project was stormwater improvements that weren't in the original budget, that we realized it just would make it a better project. We could use stormwater funds to pay for that. We'd be justified. I'd prefer to use the match that we were using out of local option sales tax from his bus to cover it, but all, all being equal, if we need to, I'd use some stormwater funds to cover a portion of the project. I'd just prefer not to.
So instead of buying three buses, we're buying two buses?
We originally funded to do two buses.
We got extra money.
But when we did the budget, we were.
We only had one grant.
We only allocated.
One was full city-funded.
Yeah.
Which is 100,000.
We just got more budget funded, or more grant funding than what we'd anticipated.
What's that do to your bus situation?
Doesn't impact it. We're buying what we had planned on getting.
It was sales tax money.
Good?
It's making sure that we use, we're still accomplishing all the projects that was in the original budget. It's shifting around based off of where we have the actual need and funds.
It works for me, man. You guys good?
Yeah.
Next is a resolution awarding contract for the 2018 parking lot improvements, Main Street and Valley Street Lot.
Yes. We bid this out, just talking about the last one. This one came in at 64,000, and recommend awarding to Hickey Contracting. This is a concrete work to be done. And maybe, I should also talk about it, some sign, parking lot signage as a part of the rest of the parking lot signage in the downtown. We actually have Main and Valley's parking signage already, had already been ordered as a part of that, so we'll just install that. The Sixth and Washington parking lot signage had not been done yet, because we didn't know what we had, as far as a project. I know that there's been some discussion about the signage in the parking lots, and a little bit of the difficulty to read them. I should have some signs next week that take some of the prism out of it. I think most of the problem with those signs is it, is it's hard to see from an angle. It's got too much retro-reflectivity in there for the size of the letters. So I'll have some samples on that. If, if it's just certainly size, we'll bump up the size from, we had four-by-fours to like a six-by-six or something, and bump up the weight of the lettering. But, you know, the signage is a part of the Sixth and Washington project. I should've talked about that. But I think it's between 20 some spots that we'll add in the Main and Valley parking lot.
Counsel?
Nice.
Eric and Hurry is not here to hear that. Eric's not here to hear that.
That's true.
I'm sure he's watching on TV. All right. Are we good?
I think you need some spicy songs, but.
All right. Let's go to the consent agenda. First, a resolution supporting the application for the REEP SEP grant to, to provide conservation-related interpretive signage at the outdoor classroom in Crepo Park.
This is a grant through the Iowa DNR RE program, SEP is Conservation Education Program. If you've been by the outdoor classroom, that was constructed a number of years ago through funds by DNF and the Crepo Park Foundation. We recently put up some signs on the outside of the signboards that kind of detail the history of Crepo Park. The inside facing the seat wall there is the interpretive area that we are applying funds for to, I guess, create this outdoor classroom area. That'll have interpretive signage on nature, ecosystems, plants, and animals. We're applying for this grant, requesting 10,000 through REEP. We do have some local funds budgeted as match already through the Parks Department. They were looking to acquire one set of signs, but we want four sets of signs that can rotate throughout the seasons and bring kids and groups out to do nature walks and have an interpretive area here. So this is again, just an application for these funds through the Resource Enhancement and Protection Program, the Conservation Education Program funds.
It looks good. You guys good?
Love it.
Okay. Peanut butter loves it. I'm good. Number two, a resolution approving 2018 agreement for mutual aid fire protection for Devoin County Fire Rescue Services. Chief?
All right. Well, I wish this was my idea, but it was actually Gina Harden from Devoin County Emergency Management.
Sweet.
She did the legwork on this agreement, got a draft, and then Patrick, our city attorney, he reviewed it and made some changes to it. So basically, it replaces five separate agreements that we would have, one with all the different fire departments in the county. So we've all gotten down to one agreement. All the agreements needed updated, anyway, so there's that part. Then there's two other changes in here compared to our previous agreements. One would be Section 4, there, the third paragraph, there's a minimum training standard, that's just to assure that whether we're sending people to another fire department to help them, or they're sending people here, that they're trained, at least to the Iowa minimum standard for a firefighter. And then Section 6 has the compensation for aid. And I don't know if you remember, a couple of years ago, we did an agreement with Mavis where we had to update that to include language. If you're on scene for more than eight hours, you can, you can start charging or billing the service for that aid. So that just covers you in case of a disaster where you have people responding probably for days, not just hours. So normal day-to-day mutual aid is always free, but a longer-term aid situation, we could either be reimbursed, or we could pay somebody for their services.
Hopefully, we never need that. But never know.
I read it's just to make us whole, right?
What's that?
It's just to make us whole.
No, not, not the after eight hours. After the eight hours, it actually would pay our wages and benefits, our costs, our true costs. To make us, okay.
That's right.
Yeah. Yeah, nothing, yeah, you're not making a profit or anything like that, no. Less than eight hours, and we do, like, we fill up their trucks with fuel if need be and stuff like that, or any supplies that they use. Good?
Sounds good, man. Thank you. Okay. We've got some hearing set. First, consideration of an ordinance repealing Chapter 122 peddlers, solicitors, transient merchants, and creating a new Chapter 122 peddlers, solicitors, mobile food vendors, and transient merchants. B is consideration of sale of property locally known as 323 South Sixth Street, City of Burlington, Iowa with conditions. C is consideration of sale of property locally known as 209 South Gunnison Street, City of Burlington, Iowa. There's our boys, they're doing it. With conditions. D is consideration of fiscal year 2017, 2018 budget amendment number one. Does anybody have anything to say about that before we move forward?
Mr. May, you said 323, it's 232.
Thank you. Appreciate that. All right, let's go to discussion items. First, we have a treasurer's report. Stephanie?
In your packet was March's treasurer's report, so you can see the property taxes will come in in April, so we show deficits now in the general fund, but once we got the property taxes this month, and then we'll make the transfers in June, that will change that balance. I didn't really see anything that stood out for this month. Again, revenues show that we're not quite where we should be, but that again is because we get the property taxes all at once, the big lump sum in April. Most of the deficit accounts are caused by grant timing or just timing with reimbursements. Our bond funds are projected to come in tomorrow. We close on the bond, so some of those projects that have deficits, those transfers will be made with the bond proceeds. Any questions?
Everybody's good?
I would point out, parking fund is one that, as we get closer to the end of the year, we're, until we get to the end of the year and see where we close out, we don't know exactly for sure, but we may end up having to do a transfer out of the general fund. We're budgeting, within the budget amendment, for that to be maybe $20,000. It'd be nice if it was a little bit less than that, but our revenues are less than what they've been in previous years, and I think it's reflective of the fact that we switched to a lot of the streets from two-hour to four-hour parking. We aren't having the same level of fines. You know, people like not to have fines, but it also impacts our revenue stream. But that's one, we'll just have to see where that ends up.
Well, the increased expenses have been the change in the parking signage and.
We, yeah, and so we budgeted for the signage itself to be paid for out of either the hotel motel tax fund or local option sales tax, I can't remember which, but the labor to do it is getting charged to the parking fund, which wasn't something that was budgeted. So that along with reduced revenues.
Any questions for Steph? Thank you. Number two, tariff facility location update. Update us.
Counsel, good evening, Jason Hutchison. And as you know, I've been coming to you for quite some time on the sports facility project, but I've been joined tonight by Dr. Ash, who's the chair of the board overseeing this project, and then Joe O'Brien, who's been with us quite a while, is here tonight as well. Just want to give you a quick update where we are. It's been since January, since we've come to you and shared a major update. And.
Press the button, Jason. You gotta press the button, buddy.
Battery's out.
I don't know.
You broke the clicker.
I don't know. Can I get, can I get some help?
There it goes.
Oh, that's cursed, isn't it?
Oh, it's flashing red. Must be the battery. Must be the battery. So anyway, three purposes for tonight. One, we want to update you on the work that's been done since we came and saw you last time, where we are currently in the design process, and then a preview of some of the asks that will come forward to you in two weeks. We do intend to come back if you'll have us at your work session in two weeks, but because there's a lot, what we wanted to do is break it up, and tonight give you an update where we're at, and then in two weeks come before you with kind of the official plans and asks. There we go. So last time I came to see you, we had a revised concept, and we had put the facility on, tentatively on city ground near the Recplex and walked you through some of the things related to that, and some of the feedback that we received from you that night and the things that we've heard in the community since then. One is to make sure of additional parking. If we do a project out there somewhere, we need to come up with some additional plans for parking at that facility. And then I know there was some concern raised about, well, what happens if this project doesn't turn out the way that you hope it does? If it's on city property, what could be the long-term financial challenges to the city with that? In fact, Mr. Mayor, I think your exact phrase was, "This makes me nervous," and so we've taken that into consideration. Third, we heard that you want to see additional financial information about the project. Then the fourth is you had interest in evaluating the current market. The market has changed since we did the last sports study. We also heard a desire to see how does the sports market, how could it change based upon these projects and the current outdoor rec facility? And then are there any operational synergies that would happen between the projects? And so we have an update for you on that as well. And with that, I will turn it to Dr. Ash.
Thank you, counsel, for the opportunity to stand before you, and I know most all of you. I don't know you yet, ma'am, but it's been a process that we've been going through on this project, and it's been no easy task to get us where we are today. And as we all know, anything good that has goodness in it takes time, effort, and energy. It doesn't just happen. And so I have a board of ten members who are working diligently to come together, to overcome obstacles, identify the obstacles, and then work to overcome them. And then we also have about a thirty-member fundraising team led by Joe O'Brien, and we're making progress related to raising those funds as well. We're at that point now where we're pretty close to being ready to break ground, but we have obviously some boxes to check as it relates to the city and working with the city and things that we need to accomplish. Jason's touched on most all of these, but I'm going to just go a little bit more in depth, that additional parking. And Jason mentioned that we heard you when you said, "We need more parking." We know we need more parking, so we relocated that facility to another part of Greater Burlington Partnership property and did not disturb, or don't plan to disturb, the existing overflow parking that's there for the Recplex. Whether or not that becomes paved parking is a matter for this council and West Burlington to deal with. That's something we're not going to be in the way with, we'll be on private property, and yet at the same time, we still have a parking need. So we want to be able to work with your staff and the city to develop an MOU on shared parking. And we obviously need to have some type of agreement with the city as it relates to moving forward with getting a building permit. And so we understand that, we appreciate that, and we fully expect in phase two to have a full-scale parking lot. But at the same time, we'll have some parking with the first phase of about eighty thousand square foot built, facilities, not really a building, it's a facility, and there'll be some parking in that first phase, but plenty of room for phase two parking, right across the street from existing parking that we would like to work with the city on an MOU and be able to work together. And then once that next parking lot is finished in phase two, then we would be talking about expanding that MOU so that the Recplex would have access to that parking as well. So we want to move forward, and in that process, we probably would discover some other things that we need to be discussing in an MOU, like mowing the grass, plowing the parking lots, those kinds of things that we don't want to miss, we don't want to overlook, but we would work with the city staff to develop their input and their guidance on what we should be inclusive in that MOU. Building permit, we know that we can't move forward without certain elements being checked in that boxes that relate to securing a building permit, and one of them is, of course, the parking, and so that's why it's important for us to be able to strike an agreement with the city council as it relates to a parking, with the understanding that we plan to put one in, a parking lot. We expect that that will happen, but that again will probably be in phase two. The timeline, the next thing we'd like to be able to bring forward is the timeline that you all are setting with your staff on when you expect to complete the Broadway street extension, because obviously that's important for fire access as well as for individuals to utilize the facility that we're putting into place or wanting to put into place. And then Jason's already alluded to the market study. We've begun that process now, and we aren't just looking at it from a standpoint of what it means for this facility, but also how we can gain some efficiencies working together between the Recplex and the new indoor sports facilities. And we want to be able to work together on that and be able to bring to you a recommendation by this company that is going to be doing our market study, and we'll be able to delve into that in greater depth and learn from what they're able to bring forward and the kind of research that they're able to do. We also will, are working on a budget, and we want the budget to be not a group of numbers that look kind of good on paper and hocus pocus stuff. We are really drilling into this. We want a pro forma that really defines what we're trying to accomplish here with that facility out there at the Greater Burlington Partnership. We don't want to be able to saddle, we don't want to, and we don't expect to saddle the city with this responsibility. We want to be able to have a very positive impact in our city, in our region economically, as well as for our youth to be able to have access to good facilities year-round, and this new indoor soccer facility would be available to the Recplex to use during the summer, during the winter, during the spring and fall as well. So it expands their ability to offer more programming, and it also is convertible to be indoor softball. So we're excited about that. It's an opportunity to bring kids into continuing to play their sport even during the winter season, and that facility is so huge, if you can imagine this, the height of it, you can put that new hotel inside of it and not touch the ceiling. It's that tall, it's that big, and though it's really pretty cool. It'll take about a week, they tell me, to inflate it, so they get all the pieces, all the bonding's done, and then they have to fill it with air, and it takes about a week, and you'll be able to watch the progression of that building grow. Eighty thousand square foot facility will grow to its full size, and then it is kept inflated by air. And then during the winter seasons, the air is heated, not comfy warm like you can wear t-shirts, but it'll be heated so that we can have indoor sports activities as well as using it for outdoor, for the outdoor activities to be in there as well. So it's really pretty exciting to see that coming together. And then we're also considering, how do we replace these items going forward? Because a bubble, if you will, a dome, has a lifespan of some twenty, twenty-five years. The turf has a similar lifespan of twenty, twenty-five years. So we're going to be building into our pro forma, set aside dollars that will help us be prepared for those replacements down the road. I won't be here for that, but somebody will be, and we want them to see that we were thinking ahead, we were planning for that to happen. And with that, we're also going to be asking the city to help us with that project, that piece of it, through the hotel motel tax. So we'll work with the city on establishing a base, and then look at how we may be working to see that base improve while we have the kind of activities here during the winter seasons. And then we're not looking for all of that, of course, we're just looking for a percentage that can then be set aside to help us with long-term maintenance. So that's what I wanted to share with you tonight, and I think both of us are open for any questions you might have or comments.
I've got one question.
Should we share that?
Sure. This is, as you probably know the layout, here is the baseball fields at the Recplex, there's that parking, and then this is that eighty thousand square foot facility, and then here is existing Broadway that goes right to there. And so we would be, and our contractor has been working with the city staff, so this isn't something that we hope will happen, it's something that we've been working with the staff on, but we would have an entranceway right here, and there would be crushed gravel all the way around the facility for fire access, and that will eventually become concrete. But until we get to that point where we're putting in concrete and whatnot, we'll be using crushed gravel. And again, we've worked with the fire marshal, and he seems to be fine with that as well. On this side is where we're talking about that extra parking, and it could be anywhere from two hundred to two hundred and fifty additional parking spaces. So we think it's pretty adequate, and then this is the extension of the Broadway, and then I'm not sure if it's going to retain the same name, but there it goes. Here it makes a turn and then heads that, whatever direction that is. I guess that's what, east? And then this is a little closer vantage point of it. Again, this would be gravel for the time being, and then eventually we'll have, and there are, will be some parking along here, and eventually we'll have an in-and-out road here and an in-and-out road here, and then parking here with access to that new road that someday will be built by the city. And then we've also been working with your planners, your engineers about water and drainage and all those kind of things. So there is, in this area over here, there is a collection pond, and so there is that opportunity to send water, not wastewater, but rainwater to that particular part of the city area. So let's see what else we got there for you. Here is the indoor look of it, the layout, and here is a full-size soccer, which is a full-size high school soccer field. And then we've just shown what it would look like for indoor softball. And then this area here...
Oh.
Here, boy, I'm just doing all kinds of things here. This area here is inside the facility, but it's considered a hard building, so that's where the restrooms will be, the concession area, and there will be a second floor, and that's just located right here, but there's a staircase here and a staircase here that gets you up to the second floor, which will give you viewing out this way over the fields, and it will be fully netted from the roof line to the floor so that no one will be hit by soccer balls or a softball for that matter. And we're looking at expanding that just a hair to put in an office, and because it's blown up by air, you have to be able to keep the air in the building, so you have to have some airlocks. And so there are some airlocks that allow for one door to be open, you bring your equipment in, you close the door, then you open the interior, and then you bring your equipment in. The main entrance would be right here, and there is concrete all the way around, but most of that is, all the other is grassy, grassy area, turf area. So you can get a sense of the softball fields. We have a layout for two different softball fields, and this is a hundred and eighty-five foot dimension from the plate to the outfield, and it would be netted as well so that there is the opportunity to keep the ball in one's field and not in the other field. So this probably does need some batteries. So these are just some of the things that we've been talking about, and then we have not moved away from building indoor courts, or what we're calling the courts. What we're talking about earlier is known as the turf, and that's a turf facility. This is known as the courts, and this is scheduled to be built at the college next to, adjacent to our existing gymnasium, so we can take advantage of those, that facility, that piece of it, as well as two collegiate-sized gym floors for additional space for kids to play and for us to have additional tournaments. The full-size courts can be subdivided into four youth-sized courts, and then we can take our big gym and divide it as well into two youth-sized courts, so we could have six games going on at one time. And it would be, it would be connected via hallways and whatnot, so people don't have to go back outside and then come back in, they can move between facilities. And there's some other things, too. There's on the second floor, there's viewing, there's some restroom facilities, those kinds of things. So that is what we're raising money for now. That's really what we still lack in a way of fundraising, but the rest of it, we have committed dollars for. Mr. Mayor?
How soon are we going to be able to see that pro forma?
In two weeks.
In two weeks?
Yes.
I'm just, I just want to, I'm just interested in seeing what that...
Yeah, yeah, and we get it, we understand, and again, what we're doing is not wanting to invent numbers and then try to do a sales pitch on that. We are trying to be as transparent and as real as we can possibly be. It's still somewhat of guesswork because this hasn't been done here before, but we're trying to be realistic in what we're trying to do and how we're trying to approach this so that we can be people of integrity.
What's your timeframe?
Timeframe? We would like to be able to begin moving dirt in July, and we would like to see a facility, if that happens, we would expect the facility to be up and functional by the end of December, first part of January.
The plan that you put up there had some parking on it. Is that parking concrete as of right now in the first phase?
It would, it would not be. It would be gravel, hard crushed gravel.
Even the parking, not just the road around it, but the parking as well?
We know it's not a permanent fix, but it's what we can do right now.
So, Dr. Ash, as I'm trying to envision this structure, is it similar to like Cedar Falls Uni Dome, only on a smaller scale, because that's held up with air?
Yes.
Okay.
Pretty similar to that. If you've been in Iowa University Football Practice Facility, it's a bubble, and that's essentially, it's a dome, some call it a bubble, it's air-supported structure, and it will always be up.
Nice and climate-controlled, that's what I like about games there.
Yeah, well, it's climate-controlled to a certain degree. You're going to still need to wear your coat and underwear, but...
Yeah, yeah, but I mean, you don't get rained on or...
Right, and the facility has the ability to read if it's got snow on it, so it will, it'll turn on the heat in the evening if it's got snow on it, so it melts it and puts it down on the ground.
A smart bubble.
Smart bubble.
Thank you.
Just looking at, wouldn't it make more sense to try and forego the cost of the gravel and just go straight to concrete? Because I'm assuming that much crushed gravel is fairly expensive.
It would be, and we would entertain the opportunity to be involved with the city on that.
With regards to the, to the parking, so there is in city code, a certain number of parking spaces that you've got to have for a venue and an attraction such as this. The number of parking spaces that we've outlined here, it totals two hundred and thirty-five. That is far more than we need for this facility in and of itself to use. And so there are a number of ways that we could accommodate parking here. One is a smaller number of spaces at the facility than a shared parking use agreement with you for the existing parking lot on the other side of Broadway, and that could, under some certain conditions, suffice the parking need. But I think everyone agrees that we need a more permanent parking solution out in that area, and so what we've done here is shown schematically how we can fit those spaces on the lot, and this, where it's at, could, it could provide parking for entrance to the Recplex on this side. It's going to be a bit of a walk from that... It's, it's gonna be a bit of a walk from that spot to the gate here. But it's also a bit of a walk from the gate here to other areas. And so where it's located would be, would provide a, a number of access points. So to the specific question of how much, we're, we're working with, um, with the, um, staff at both Parks and Recs and Development in terms of how much parking do we need to build into the initial plan? And then for, to have this much parking, because it would be in excess of what we need to operate the facility, that I think is where we're gonna come to you with a, a request for capital. We've been very clear from day one, there will be a day where we come to you with an official request for capital for part of this project. And that will, that will come here in a couple of weeks. And, and we would intend to, uh, use the bulk of that to build out additional parking. Now, two hundred and thirty-five spots, is that the right number of spots? Or do we need this additional row? I think we're still working that out, but what we're showing you here is two hundred and thirty-five.
The, so there's gonna be parking on the street once it's completed, correct?
Maybe. So in, in working through, um, in working through that, that may or may not be, be the case.
Okay, and there's gonna be parking at your facility. How much parking is funded by what you have now? Concrete parking?
So the final bid is not in yet. And so we're, we're working through that. What you see on the, the bottom side, so some of that, um, the entrance, I'm gonna walk away from this for just a second. The entrance is here. And so there are park, um, there's some immediate access parking to the front of the building. There, as we build this, this access point here, a number of these spots are in, in the budget, but certainly not all two hundred and thirty.
Is that what you called the phase one, Jason? Was the, those immediate ones were in phase one?
Yeah, and so of course, some of this is, is what we're negotiating with the development department on, how many do we have to guarantee that we have in order to get the, the building permit? But also through the shared parking agreement, so.
Those are concrete or those are crushed rock?
So I believe, I believe that it is concrete.
Okay.
My, my take had been that that first phase was, was concrete.
Concrete.
Yep. Now your, this project overall cost on this portion is in, uh, what kind of ballpark?
We're targeting four million dollars for this project.
Four?
Now, the, the expanded parking would go beyond four million.
So, and I'm just thinking out loud here, but if you've got the shared parking agreement so that you could use the spaces on the other side, there was additional parking added to the road once it was completed? Through whatever process we go through there?
Maybe. That, that was our, we originally looked at that. And we were hopeful that perhaps the state grant would help pay for some of that additional parking. It may not. And so the, we, so we're gonna have to work, but the, the wider roadway may not be paid for with state dollars. And so I think we've just gotta reconsider that.
Oh, you did. After my conversation with Zach and then he's discussed with the RISE grant people, about opening up, having a two-way access to this, this area. If you, could you go back any on that? I can talk, what I'm talking about. So the RISE grant potentially could pay for the extension of McCambell Drive from West Burlington Avenue, uh, to the corner there. But the RISE grant would not likely be funded for the Broadway extension itself because it would create two entry points, uh, to the parcels. So, um, I think the concept of what we were gonna apply for was just the, the, uh, the, the longer stretch of roadway, uh, from West Burlington Avenue to the corner here. And then I think tax increment financing potentially pick up the remainder.
As we've done the original budget, it's fifty-fifty. With, with a RISE project like this, it's fifty percent, uh, state funding, fifty percent us. As you've gone and had some discussions with the state, it's fifty-fifty on that east-west portion.
Correct.
And the other portion, the north-south would be us. When we built the budget, we were looking at using TIF financing to do it. And we have some flexibility for having that dollar amount be a little bit, little bit higher and not be in a position where it causes us problems. So seeing that, seeing a portion of that needing to be a hundred percent us isn't something that makes that out of the realm of possibility. And it's, and the biggest reason that we like it, aside from the project that's being talked here and the development of the park itself, the, the recplex as, as it sits is very, has very limited access. And this is a major benefit to be able to get a second access point to it. So with that being said, we still have the flexibility, even if we can't use RISE funding for some on-street parking to, to build it within the, to the project itself, have, have that part of the project cost and be within the TIF portion.
But to get back to my point, there's gonna be parking, you get the, the shared use agreement for the parking on, that currently exists. There's gonna be parking located right next to the facility that's gonna be constructed. There's gonna be parking potentially on the road that's going to be constructed. Would it make sense for, would it be better to add parking to your side of the street? Or would it be better to finish out the space on our side of the street? That needs to be finished for parking. Is, with, with the agreement in place, is there a preference there on your end or?
Well, I, yeah, I mean, I think that's a, that's a fair question and a point worth exploring more. You know, the facility itself is gonna be used quite a bit in the, in the wintertime. And so of course, the, the, the shorter the walk that people have to the front door, the better experience they'll have. But, um, it's likely that there will always be a need for additional parking across the street for overflow. I mean, we, we hope to have really large tournaments.
Even if we have on-street parking. One of the things that happens with this, I don't know how many spots there are on the north-south where that's all grass right now. How many folks park in there currently?
Can be over a hundred and fifty.
So, so you might have a hundred and fifty parking in there. When we build this road, you're losing all of that parking. So we're actually losing spots in that area that somehow we have to be able to make up for. Staff is, as we've talked about, uh, some of the, what this request is looking like for the parking on the south side. It's a benefit for the, this nor, new indoor rec facility. It's, uh, is also a benefit for our usage, uh, for the, for the outdoor recplex. Part of what we've talked about is if that second phase, as you start thinking about this over the next couple of weeks, if that parking lot on the south side of the building gets built, they're getting a couple of sidewalks that connect from there over to the outdoor recplex. That, it's a benefit for us during the summer months too. And not only does it provide for a good access, it's, it's a little bit farther away from the main entrance, but you also have access back on the southeast corner of, of our complex that that lot is set up well for parking or as well as any other spot is. So there, there are some potential benefits to us. It doesn't get the overflow parking paved on the north end. But it, it does still expand the number of actual surface lot parking that, that we do have available. It's, I don't know if it's ideal for what you're looking for, but it's, does it, how do you feel it meets needs for out there?
Certainly meets the needs with these expanded soccer fields here on the south side. We have more access to that area. The parking over here is much further away for those south fields than we would desire. And this new parking up here would be ideal for that location.
When you developed a parking need for trying to pave that north section, what was the tentative budget that we'd set aside there for funding on that?
For the, this, north of this parking lot?
Originally, when we were originally looking at this, uh, for the overflow area that we currently use?
I don't recall if it was around...
Is it like four fifty or something like that? And it, to us, there's still a viability to look at that kind of dollar amount towards parking needs in this area. We'd, it'd be the same identified funding source that we'd be looking at. You have the funds that are coming in from the, the manor sale that you could potentially put towards this. It's, and it, does it need to go where it's being suggested? No, but is it something that would benefit both entities? I think that you could make the argument that yes, it does. And that's, that's something to chew on over the course of the next couple of weeks in context of what is being presented.
When, when is the, the joint market studies supposed to be done?
So as Dr. Ash mentioned, we've started the process. We have selected, uh, we went through, um, a process where I, I think we had, um, six submissions from companies willing to do that. And, um, we've narrowed it down to our top, um, the, the company that we'd like to do the deal with. However, we are negotiating with them right now. So I'm hoping to, hoping to squeeze them just a little bit more before we sign that. But that would be about a ninety to a hundred and twenty day window. So, uh, we'd be looking at having the results of that, uh, towards the end of summer.
So you wouldn't have that study back before you broke ground?
Correct. And, and that, that study does two things. One, it takes the new concepts as they're currently presented. And it also takes the existing recplex and says, what is the sports market like today? And then how will it change with these facilities? And then how can all three of these facilities collaborate on management and operations to get the most successful outcome? It will also do things like examine current recplex operations and make recommendations for improvement of operations that that can be done.
Also probably helps you establish your base, doesn't it?
Yes.
So, and even on that study, the, when we were back in budget session, we talked about the cost of that. And we talked about the value of having a study done in terms of the outdoor recplex and having a value to us doing it. We had, at that time, we knew that we're reducing the chamber contribution for that first, uh, first year of this next contract by seventy-five hundred. And that would, that was a, a good source to use towards paying a third of the study cost. You had, at the time, seemed in, in agreement that that was an okay and acceptable use and would be beneficial to us, although we haven't been billed and you haven't authorized payment on that yet. The cost you're looking at now is more than that. If that's about, if we're paying a third of that study, which was kind of the thought behind that, is, is gonna be more than that.
So we had a targeted cost for the market study in and of itself at around twenty thousand. And I think with travel costs that, that came in somewhere around between twenty and twenty-two thousand dollars to analyze the market. And then based upon the, the conversation that you all had about the operational piece, we did an add-on component to that plan for what, what would it look like if we added on an evaluation of the operations of the current recplex facility? And then recommendations for maximum efficiencies across that. And that's, that's the piece that I'm still working with them on what that price is going to be. I'm hoping for that to come in, um, you know, around another ten to twelve thousand beyond the base bid. And so we've not committed to that. But our group feels as though that's a very valuable piece of, of this endeavor. So we're willing to fund, uh, go beyond our initial budget to get that additional piece.
They would still like the city to be thinking about their third of the additional cost. And as, as that has gone on, we've had staff have been involved in the, going, the evaluation of the firms that submitted, were, had the opportunity to give some comments in terms of which, which vendor seemed like it would be a good fit. Talking about, if it's another three, four, or five thousand dollars, it would be a, a third share. Hotel motel tax is not a great source for that, just because our revenues are way down. But there, the, the one source that has funded comparable-type studies in the past has been the Economic Development Fund out of the local option sales tax. Uh, we've put money towards a market, this type of market study in the past. And to me, it would make sense that, that, that that would be a spot where a request could funnel through to that group and then up to the city council itself if there was another three to five thousand need to, to match that third cost on that evaluation. You love having a lot of information thrown at you with lots of different funding pieces. That is a, for us, that's a major benefit to the recplex as we try to figure out, how do, how do we move to the future? We're not, we're not bringing in the revenue source, the revenue that we were in the past. Are we, are we doing things appropriately? Are, is our price structure correct? The way that we do the two-dollar entry fee, is that something that we should evaluate and maybe, uh, think about? Is that having a negative impact on, on how we compete in a more of a regional market? I mean, there is a lot of value to having this done. But again, it's something that needs a decision from this group as to whether you think, whether you've got, all see the value of it too.
Absolutely. I mean, I don't know, we've got millions of dollars wrapped up in that project. I don't know how we can move forward without knowing what the markets, where the market's going, where we are.
You're into it, but is the rest of the group into it?
Well, I think it'd be, be a little foolhardy to, uh, proceed without looking at the whole overall operation, so.
To me, that's the easier part of what all the different requests are. I think this is something that's valuable to all of us.
Yep.
Participating in other things may be a little bit harder or more involved discussion for the council to try to figure out. Out of the things that are being talked about, the next one that's, from my perspective anyway, and talking with staff about the needs out there with some of our high-usage events, having that parking get built would be of extreme value to us on some of our busier weekends. So, I mean, it may not be, if we're just doing it for the recplex itself, it might not be the, where we would look to do that parking. We may look to extend where our temper, our overflow parking is now and then maybe look for another place for overflow parking. But given that you're changing the dynamics of what's going out there, this, this can be viable for, for us too.
I'd like to look at the possibility of, of doing both, just doing them both on a smaller scale instead of adding the full extent of overflow parking, draw, pulling that back and then taking the rest of those funds and contributing it and saying, okay, well, we can get X number of spaces for X number of dollars. And if, and if that doesn't work, then we can, then we'll just have to commit to one or the other. But at least look at that as a possibility.
I think the four hundred and fifty thousand wasn't gonna cover two hundred and twenty-five spots. I think it's probably more, Nick? No, you're busy on your phone, but, um, when we were doing cost estimates, do you remember?
On Facebook?
I was, I was on email.
As, as we were doing cost estimates on parking, do you remember about what the cost was and how?
I do remember the parking lot and the road together.
Where'd the four fifty come from?
The reclex has a little different needs in the summer and spring. And the service road, similar to the V's, fits our needs more so than winter parking where you need snowplow and that's tough to do on gravel or grass. So even if you just looked at the portion drives for the northern portion and then the full pavement parking spaces for the indoor.
So a, a little bit of a flex like that? To your point on getting some of that? It seemed like it wasn't, and I don't know if you're gonna be able to find it cause it's hard to find that kind of stuff on the, and, but it seemed like we weren't able to fund quite that many parking spots with the cash that we had. I don't, I don't know if that's right or not.
Where'd the four fifty come from?
It was, uh, looking at, we had about six, it was, yeah. It was looking at, at, we had six hundred and fifty towards the downtown parking that we said that we were gonna use.
Okay.
And it might've been, we might've said a little bit higher than four fifty even. We might've said the other. And some of it to me is, I'm just trying to limit how much I'm saying that you're setting aside for this.
I, I mean, I think we just, we figure out what, look at the options on the table. I mean, let's, I'm, I'm interested to see what next week's presentation's gonna look like for two weeks.
Two weeks. And even, and I know that, I've seen some of the numbers that they've been able to do. And I know that they want to be able to refine them. I mean, that, they can, they can make a project work as well as we can, but it shows the same, I think it's probably gonna ultimately show the same type of thing that the outdoor recplex does. It needs some assistance. Now, what does it need? That's part of what you've already set up, the destination fee, uh, to try to cover. And it's very comparable to the type of fee that we put into the outdoor recplex.
Well, as, as far as the study goes, from my, from, from my position, I, I'm not interested in going after the, uh, going for the turf facility unless we know, uh, where we're at and they're... after the, going for the turf facility unless we know where we're at and there is a possibility of some efficiencies down the road for the Recplex. I think that's the only way we can really look at it. So if we're, if we get to that point, I guess, as far as study goes, Jason, you know, we're in, you know, as far as I'm concerned, because it would seem ridiculous to spend this much money over here and then to skimp two, three thousand dollars here. So it's unfortunate that that study won't be done before you start, you know, really start going. But I would have to say that, for me, that'd be a caveat. I'd have to have that study to see where we can improve the Recplex, too.
Jason, real quick, I have two more questions for you. First off, first question is, what's your expected timeframe for the indoor basketball portion of this? And you don't like that question, I know. And the second question is, you probably won't like this one just as much. Have you approached West Burlington and the county with the same type of information and the same expectation for assistance?
So question one, we would build that facility tomorrow if we could find the rest of the money tonight. And so, you know, if you'd like to make a personal donation on the part of Rinker Insurance, we would amortize that for you over five payments and get going right away. We want to, we reached a point in our fundraising where we had enough to do one phase of the project. And so we've decided, rather than waiting until we hit the big number, let's go ahead and move forward with phase one. We've seen what's happened to hotel motel tax. We know that we've, we don't want to wait on this any longer than we have to.
Well, I think, too, is when we crunch the numbers, Jason's alluded to the fact that the turf, it costs us about four million dollars to build and put into place. And the courts, it costs about seven million dollars. So we have enough money right now to more than cover pledges, more than cover the turf. We don't have enough money if we decided today, okay, we're not going to do the turf, we're going to do the courts. We don't have much money for that yet. So we're not there. And we feel like it's important that the public sees, as well as our donors, see that we're moving forward, because we've had some stop and starts, stop and starts, and we just have to demonstrate that this is a good project and that we're fully forward. And at the same time, Joe and his team of thirty-some people are still out there working hard to raise those funds, the rest of those funds. So I have always been concerned, of course, that we would get something happening at the county, at the college. But the reality is, at this point, we don't have enough commitment to be able to build those courts just yet.
Second part of your question, we have not formally approached either West Burlington or the county for capital contribution to the project. So our intent would be to come to you in two weeks. Since you've been working closest with us on this piece, we would intend to go to those other entities at some point in the future. We don't have a timeline for that yet.
No, but it is in our notes that we need to do that. I did have, to answer your question, I do have pictures of the interior.
Okay.
Of what it would look like. And if you watch it long enough, the exterior will pop up. And this is what it is expected to look like, is obviously not done yet.
Yeah. Nice.
I've been at the Iowa facility, so I think I got a good understanding. Thank you, Doc.
Yeah, I'm good.
You're good?
I've seen them.
You're good?
I know last weekend, we held a soccer tournament, the Recplex, correct? And that, what was the revenue generated from that? It was quite significant.
I don't know the answer to that question.
It was quite significant. And I know for years now, and I may be pressing this year to say decades, but there has not been adequate facilities, and we are losing a lot of tournaments in town. People are having to go to Iowa City, they're having to go to all over. And I really think that if we do this, this can be a great revenue generator for our community. So I don't need a study. I know we need the study, and I know those of you behind the desk here are saying, we need a study to say that we need this. I don't need a study. I know that we need it. I have heard the voices pleading for years, we need a facility like this. I know we have to justify it for our constituents, but I know that, I know that it's desperately needed.
Thank you. And just to follow up on the point on the study, there was a study done in 2012 that helped guide our efforts to this point. And we have, but now that we've separated the project into two different components, and the turf part is far larger than we originally anticipated, that's why we wanted to update the study at the same time that we were, I was at a work session and heard you all say, we'd like to know more about, is the Recplex getting its appropriate market share? And so without that piece, I don't know that we would have moved forward with the study. But it made sense, since you were questioning that anyway, that we go ahead and participate in the study, because we think that there are larger opportunities than we even imagined a number of years ago.
I'm excited to see the results of the study, too, because I think we can do more with concessions. I know we can. I know we've been losing some revenue there and some things, too. So I'll be excited to see it.
All right. Any other questions?
Pretty well grilled it over.
All right. Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
All right. Up next, we have nuisance update.
We have some, another group here, if we wanted to switch your, for the Clark Field House and set up the city staff.
Okay.
Okay. Let's go ahead and do that, then. So now we have waived fees for P and G for Clark Field House.
Purple and gray.
Good evening. Thank you very much. Greg Reynolds, the Director of Business for the Burlington School District. The Purple and Gray Foundation has done a tremendous job in assisting the school district and the facility with upgrades to the Bracewell Stadium. This would be the final phase three of their project, is to upgrade and build a new locker room at that facility. They've worked very diligently through fundraisers and raised the funds to construct this building, and are going to donate that facility to the school district. So we're asking on behalf, you know, the council and the city's worked very well with the school in the past in assisting us in waiving fees for facility projects. And on behalf of Purple and Gray, through this donation, we're asking the council to consider waiving the fees for this project.
Do we have any, what those fees are?
It's about sixty-six hundred plus.
Yeah. Does anybody have any issues?
I don't.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for coming down.
Thanks, Greg.
We have a waiver in 2014 of original Bracewell projects. We'll have a resolution prepared for consideration.
Okay.
With amounts in there.
All right. Great. Thank you. Okay. Next, we have the nuisance update.
Did we stylus the clicker? It doesn't work?
Well, that clicker works fine. Eric's clicking like crazy over there.
All right. So I'm here to talk to you about our nuisance code updates and just other updates we've been doing with the nuisance program. We're talking a lot about code recently, but it's not the only thing we're doing, so I just wanted to go over some of the new effort we're making for nuisances. So I'm going to briefly go over our abatement process, as well as some issues faced by the nuisance officers, go over why we're updating our processes and code, and then go over the updates that we're looking at. So a abatement process can be a fairly lengthy process. It starts with staff receiving a complaint, either by phone, email, drop-in, website. They have to go out and verify the issue in person to make sure it actually is a nuisance. Then they notify the violator with timeframe to abate, and that notice could be personal delivery. They talk to the property owner at their property. It could be posting an orange tag, or it could be a letter, certified or normal. They follow up to verify it's been abated. If it hasn't been, then they contact a contractor to get the nuisance abated and complete forms to put that on the council resolution. Each nuisance in itself can take up to one and a half hours and longer than that, depending on how complex a nuisance issue is. So some issues faced by the inspectors are balancing structure versus situation. You want to treat everyone the same and by city code, but at the same time, every situation's a little bit different. So you're trying to balance those two competing forces. You're dealing with individuals. Everybody has different issues, different problems. They usually are upset about something. There's a lot of personal situations. People who have health problems that then lead to property nuisance issues. It's an issue our nuisance inspectors face. How do you deal with an issue while still being sympathetic to people that have some personal problems? Neighbor disputes take up a lot of time between staff. There might be neighbors who really dislike each other, so they're calling in every day or every week, taking up staff time, because every call, they do still have to go out and verify if there is a nuisance or not. Personal perspectives on standards, we get this sometimes, where if you're in a nicer neighborhood and you're not used to seeing something like tall grass, it might seem like a big issue to you that needs to be addressed immediately. But we still have to go through our process, and it's still placed behind other issues that have been called in before. And that goes back to timing of issues, too. If you see trash that's in your neighbor's yard and it's blowing all over the place, you want to take care of it the same day. We still have to go through our process of notifying a property owner and then getting a contractor on board to clean it up. So that timing of issues can sometimes cause problems with people who want to see things done more quickly. Other commitments is a big one for our staff. Our nuisance inspectors are also our rental inspectors, and they split their time between those two jobs. So why are we looking to update our processes and our code? Well, one, it's a common community complaint. We get that of staff a lot. The way your neighborhood looks is something that is very important to people, it's very emotional for people. I'm sure as council members, you get that often as well. And that is reflected in the city council's goal reports, going back to the last four goal reports, 2018, 2016, 2015, 2012. One of the main concerns for councils has been nuisance code, blighted neighborhoods, and the appearance of properties. I'm sure if we went back past 2012, it would be similar, too. So some things that we are doing this year and that we started last year include tracking our data better, shifting rental re-inspections, acquiring tax sale deeds, staffing increases, implementing iWorks, proactive nuisance enforcement, and then nuisance code changes. I'm going to go over all of those here. So data tracking. In the past, we've kept file or paper folders on all of our nuisances. If you want to compare them side by side, it's not easy. So this past year, we've started entering everything in Excel. We really started getting this off the ground in July. So these numbers you see here are for 2017, July through December, they were two hundred and eighteen nuisances investigated. Of those, fifty-three percent were grass, eighteen trash, fifteen junk. And the divide between trash and junk, it's a rule of thumb, if our sanitation trucks would take it away, it's more trash, and if not, it's more junk. So junk is some of the tires, TVs, large appliances. Vehicle, three percent, tree, four percent, other, seven percent. Some of the things in the other category, hornets nested in an alley, dog feces on sidewalk, bushes blocking traffic. Basically, anything that is not easily handled by any other department, nuisance gets contacted about it. They're kind of the catch-all for those complaints that aren't easily dealt with. Here's a month-by-month breakdown of our nuisance complaints. You can see that it really peaks in the summer month and then tapers off in the fall and winter. I also want to point out that we had our seasonal inspectors start at the end of July, so there was a huge jump from July to August. Ongoing, we have properties that we know that they're not going to mow, that we know they're not going to pick up trash, so we continually monitor them and mow them every few weeks. And these are properties where the owner's not in the city, they might have lots of special assessments on them. I'll go over those in a little bit more detail. Our costs, now this is just a very base figure, it's not a hundred percent accurate, but it can give you an idea of how much we pay to abate nuisances every year. In 2017, we spent about fifty-nine thousand on nuisances, not including building demolitions, and then we received thirty-five, almost thirty-six thousand back. So there's a difference, a deficit of about twenty-three thousand there. It's not so easy to measure revenue versus cost, because we might be getting payments for a nuisance that we abated back in 2015, and we're just now getting money for it. This can give you some idea that we're not making money off abating nuisances. It's something that costs the city in the long run. Another thing we've been doing is shifting our rental re-inspections. As I mentioned, our nuisance inspectors are also our rental inspectors. They have to deal with both. So we've been shifting our large-scale rental complex re-inspections to these October, November, December months, when they have less nuisance calls, to try and free them up more in the summer when nuisances start to pick up. Something else we're doing is acquiring tax sale deeds. So I mentioned that we have these ongoing nuisance properties. Often what happens is we demolish a house, or we do nuisance abatements on an empty lot, and it racks up special assessments. So there might be three, four thousand in special assessments on an empty lot. So it's not very likely someone's going to come buy that lot, pay all the special assessments, and develop it. So what you end up with is just pockets of neighborhoods where we maintain the grass, and we pay for it every year. So we're starting to request those deeds from the county. They're up for tax sale. And what that means is they've gone up for auction twice. They haven't been claimed, so the county now holds a certificate. We asked the county to give the certificate to us. We forgive our assessments. The county forgives our back taxes, and then we try and find a home for these properties. These are two we recently did. For this one, the neighbors want the yard. We will sell it to them, and then they will maintain it. We want to keep sending crews there. This one is across from the South Hill Park. It's next to a vacant house. We're currently trying to get through 657A. And we think that with these two lots together, we'd be able to bundle them and sell them to a developer who might be interested in building next to South Hill Park. So we don't like to take empty lots without having a plan for them, but we are trying to be more aggressive about getting these lots back into people's hands to take care of them, so we have to, so we can stop taking care of them. We've also shifted more staff to nuisances. We have two inspectors that do both nuisance and rental. They're full-time. We have one office staff. She does office work for development and parks. So she does a little bit of nuisance, but she's spread pretty thin. Myself, I've been directed to help out with sending goals and policies for the nuisance program. And then we also hired one seasonal nuisance staff, and he's full-time April through September. We are implementing iWorks this summer. It is software-compatible with mobile devices. It streamlines the nuisance identification, documentation, notice, and follow-up process. So once we have this fully up and running, we should be able to go to a property, take a picture of the nuisance. It will automatically document the address, where it is, what category of nuisance it is, and ideally print off a form letter that when we get back to the office, we can then send that letter to the property owner, notify them of the nuisance.
Well, same with that. What we're looking at is whether we can do emails to the owner of the information's in their website.
Right. Yeah. We can do emails now on GIS if people give us their emails. We've added a field on the rental permit for emails. With this, we'd be able to automatically send emails.
Charlie, is this the same system that they're using up in Davenport?
They use a slightly different system. It's similar, just a different company. And it also improved that data tracking and can link up with other departmental data. So for instance, if Public Works is using this, too, our inspectors would be able to see, was there a sewer line or a sewer break recently on this property and stuff like that? It'd all be at their fingertips in the field. We're also starting to do more proactive nuisance enforcement. Due to staff time and availability, nuisance code enforcement is often complaint-based. Now, they do, when they go do a rental inspection or go do a nuisance inspection, they'll look in the area and they'll identify other nuisances if they're there. And in their free time, they'll go out and drive around their neighborhood zones to look for nuisances. The unfortunate thing is they don't often have free time. So we're trying to more proactively go out and address nuisance violations in these off months again. We've been doing that these past couple of years by looking at garages. They're identified in the fall or winter. Both our nuisance and building, department staff go out and identify garages. Property owners are notified in December and given till July to correct. In 2017, about three hundred garages were identified, and in 2016, about fifty garages were identified. And this is, represents a whole sweep of the city, so we will not be doing this again this fall. We're going to move on to something else. Which brings me to future programs. We would really like to do junk vehicles this fall and winter, and we think that that'll be pretty successful. One benefit of junk vehicles is that there's already private companies in town who will haul away junk vehicles for free. So if we notify property owners, it's not going to cost them anything to then go and contact towing companies to come and take their junk vehicles. We've also discussed looking at dilapidated porches and fences as part of a citywide sweep, and then doing some targeted neighborhood property maintenance, working with neighborhood associations like the South Hill neighborhood or the Saunders and Heights Neighborhood Association. There's issues with that, such as follow-up funding. If somebody doesn't correct their property conditions, do we have the funding to then go in and fix it up for them? And then there's also issues, well, what do you do if property owners can't fix up their property? Do you then find them? Do you go in and do the work and assess it to their property? So those are questions we'll have to answer if and when we start going to targeted neighborhood property maintenance programs. We've discussed rolling this in with TIF, and that can be something that is discussed with the TIF policy. Which brings me to nuisance code.
Charlie, one thing I'd like to point out with that, now staff has really, over the course of the last couple of years, been directed to be much more aggressive on nuisances from the council. And so as Charlie's making a presentation on what some of these efforts are, it's coming from that backdrop of what's really been told. it's coming from that backdrop of what's really been told very clearly from the council in the past. If there is a desire to see a policy shift in that from, I mean, we've had some council changes occur here. If there's a desire to see a shift in how aggressive he's looking at being with some of these things, it needs to get voiced and clearly identified that there's a different approach that you'd like to see done.
You're not going to hear any complaints from me. Go get them.
Nope. Charlie doing a great job.
Tighten down the hatches.
My one question would be, and I should have asked this earlier. So when you have a property that you're mowing grass, when does that stop? What's the process for all this, you know, it's never being paid for?
Right.
It's exceeded the value. When do we stop that and move into acquisition?
So if there is no structure on it, it's just an empty lot, it stops when we can find somebody else to take care of it. Or something else we've explored is planting trees and making some lots kind of an urban forest where they're just meant to grow. Those are the only two options. You either find someone else to take care of it or you stop taking care of it. If there's a house on it and we keep racking up these special assessments on the property, eventually that house goes up for tax sale and somebody else gets ownership of it. That takes a few years, though.
Okay.
So that's the issue for vacant lots is it takes the cycles to go through the county before we can request a tax sale certificate.
Right.
Versus if there's a house there, it's that six-month timeframe proving it's vacant. We can acquire that much sooner, but the vacant lots, it takes
A lot tougher.
A couple of years to go through that process.
Okay. Thank you for answering that.
And as part of this, we're also looking to change our codes. The changes to our code came from three sources. An internal review by staff, looking at is our current code meeting what we need it to do? Is it consistent with our other policies? A legal review by our attorneys, looking is this code consistent with state law? Is it consistent with other parts of our own code? And then review of other cities' code. What do other cities do? Are there things we can do better and learn from other cities? The purpose of their changes are to either provide clearer direction for methods of enforcement, eliminate tedious or unproductive practices, and expand enforcement options to address community and staff concerns. I'll give an example of each of those. So notice requirements. This one has received a lot of attention. It establishes notice by publication for grass and trash, which, as we went over earlier, that's about 70% of the complaints that our nuisance inspectors get. The intent of this change is to increase the ability of nuisance inspectors to address grass and trash in a timely manner. A certified letter, nobody signs for it. Takes about two weeks to get kicked back. And in that time, and grass is still growing, trash is getting spread around the neighborhood. It's stressful for our inspectors and as well as for the neighbors who are contacting the inspectors, asking when is this going to get done? It also takes a significant amount of paperwork for those ongoing nuisance properties. We know these empty lots that we continually mow, if we send them a certified letter, it's not going anywhere. It's going to bounce back. So this is not meant to, your piles of junk, vehicles, stuff like that, we would still give certified letter. This is meant for us to be able to address some of these smaller problems like loose trash or grass more quickly and effectively and take off some of that paperwork burden for staff so they can be freed up to look at larger issues. We also, I do want to iterate that. It is in the city's best interest and in the property owner's best interest for the property owner to abate their own nuisances. We lose money, they lose money. So staff does make every effort to try and contact a property owner and let them know that you need to take care of this. Junk vehicles. Eric talked a little bit about those ordinance today. Really, it gives a more clear definition for what a junk vehicle is, what the process is for abating it, and what the authority of the city is for towing away junk vehicles. It wasn't as clearly defined in our code and that's something that our attorneys identified. You need something more clear to be able to do this. Penalties. We are looking at adding in administrative penalties for nuisance violations, which allows down here for the city, to give the city the ability to revoke any permit, license, certificate, or registration provided by the city as part of a nuisance penalty. So if somebody had a home occupation permit and they were a repeat nuisance violator, we can revoke their home occupation permit based on their nuisance violations. Another part of the penalty change would allow us to do a municipal infraction as well as abating a nuisance for repeat offenders. We do have people who we will pick up their trash, mow their yard, and we'll send them the fees. They don't care, they pay it even though it's an extra $200 administrative fee. This would allow us to also, as well as abating it, go through the municipal infraction process to try and add some more teeth to our process.
What does that entail?
Municipal infraction.
Right.
It involves going to court and saying that this is a nuisance. There is an established fee, $7.50.
Up to $7.50.
Up to $7.50 a day.
That's being declared by the judge.
Right.
Up to $750?
A day for a nuisance. We, as far as I know, we've never actually had that fine imposed. What usually happens is the judge says, do this by this date. And if they don't, then they're in contempt of court and that's when fees and even jail time can be imposed.
So the judge decides what that amount is and...
The judge decides what the penalty is and if there's a penalty.
And that municipal infraction isn't something that we've used a tremendous amount. The one that I can think of over the course of the last couple of years where that's really come into play, we had the discussion about the tent in the downtown area and not just the tent, but the garbage and other items that started appearing and staying there for a period of time. And this was really the avenue that we had that we could get something done to where we could get court authorization to take action and then to allow us the ability, when if something came back a couple of weeks later, to take a subsequent action.
Yeah. It's only for the worst of the worst cases. Municipal infractions are very time and money intensive for staff, so we don't want to do that very often. It's really only for places where we haven't had success going through our normal actions. For more information on complaints, you can go to the city website. You can actually report a nuisance complaint online. We do get some of those every week. Tall grass, weeds, you can do a rental complaint online as well. Are there any questions about the nuisance programs we're doing or the direction we're moving?
I would say, I realize Tanner and David are over there listening and writing, so I need to learn to frame my responses better. Rather, go get them, Charlie. Because I know that's going to come up. So, you know, the thing I think, I think I could say for the three of us, the new ones, is one of the things we heard repeatedly during the questions and debates going into the election is that people were tired of their neighborhoods looking terrible and shabby. And so I think that, you know, Jim asked about the direction of the council. I can, for myself, I can tell you that I'm going to be like-minded to previous councils as far as going after these nuisance abatements and trying to resolve them. And this is kind of funny because it's tonight, but I was looking at the clock because I'm hoping to be able to go up and mow my yard after the meeting tonight.
We can send someone there to mow it for you.
No, I don't want you to. Because, you know, it's that time of year where grass grows. So, and it does grow, but it takes real little effort to go mow your yard and pick up your trash. So I wholeheartedly continue to enforce those nuisances, abatements. Clarify that for you guys.
I'm with John, Charlie. You and I have had conversations and as far as I'm concerned, I want you to be as proactive as you're comfortable being, trying to put this program together and make it work, so.
I'm on board.
Complaints from me.
It's been said you get one chance to make a good first impression. How many people come here? And I have in the past. I did a very short stint as a real estate agent and you're driving people through certain neighborhoods and certain city streets and they're thinking, oh my. And you're in competition with other cities and we have to put our best foot forward. I'm on board.
All right, very good. Any other questions or concerns?
Nope. Not for me.
Thank you. All right, next we have our free summer rides for children.
Eric's got a PowerPoint he's going to throw up for me. I just wanted to let you know, we've done this for four years now. After the first Monday after school is over, we open up free rides to school kids on the buses. And I have the numbers there. So last year, we had 7,300 rides for school kids for the months of June, July, and August, which is a pretty good increase over where we were in 2015. If you'd go to the next slide. Kind of the reason why we started doing this, you can see the ridership during school session is about 900 per day. That number's probably changed some from when that statistic was taken. And then during the summer, it's 600 a day. So that's a fairly substantial decrease in ridership during, you know, during a given day. And so why do we give free rides? Well, ultimately, rides and miles turn into backend dollars from the state and federal government to fund our program. Approximately about a $1 per ride is what is generated. I don't know that that's completely accurate. I haven't run the statistic on what it was last year. I think at that time, maybe that's what it was. But it's always kind of a moving chart because we always go in with the percentage of what the other transit agencies are doing for ridership and miles. So that number floats around a little bit. But, you know, 7,000 rides is a pretty good number. We give rides a lot to the library and then for the summer program that Eric's going to talk about. And a lot of the times, they're rides of larger groups of kids. So we get one pickup, one drop-off, and get 30 or 40 rides. So it's a pretty effective pickup system. And I think it gives the opportunity to take kids maybe someplace where they aren't able to ride their bike or drive to because they're not old enough. But that's all I had, I think, for slideshow.
Okay.
Starts June 6th is the wrong answer. I think it's June 4th.
Is there a minimum age? I mean, you won't let like a two-year-old walk to the bus?
No. If they can walk up to the bus and tell us where we're going, that's a pretty, that's a pretty advanced two-year-old.
I'm just asking if there was a, you know...
I need to take lessons from that two-year-old. No, typically younger than five, we want them with an adult.
Adult, that's...
Because I saw that up there, that's why.
And then that's also where we get the money too, is the adults are paying for it.
Do we change our routes at all to make it more kid-friendly? So we can pick up more of these ridership miles?
Yeah, our rides, a lot of what picks up the kids during the summer is our shuttle services. During this time of year, we have routes that run for school runs. And so then we have those routes or those buses and drivers become available. And so then it's crazy during the day, the way that the routes start and then they transition into shuttle routes or demand response. So if you need a ride from your corner of where you live, you can get a shuttle service to come pick you up at a certain timeframe, given, you know, where they are on their shuttle route. So the shuttle routes end up picking up most of the kids on the...
And I'm assuming they go by kid, they go by Fun City and the mall and places kids would want to go.
Yep. Downtown, art center, and the pool. And we make quite a few trips up to the pool.
Great.
Very good, thank you.
Thanks.
Next, we have the summer camp.
Just going to talk briefly on the summer camp, kind of taking off what Nick was talking about. We utilize the bus service quite a bit for our summer camp. We take our kids every day to the summer free lunch program at the schools. This year, it's at Course Elementary and Burlington High School, June 11th through the 8th, August 8th. Generally, we accept around 65 kids as our maximum at the summer camp. Currently here today, we have 52 that have already signed up. You can register online at our website. The cost is $75 activity fee, one-time fee, and then $70 per week per child. It is at Perkins Park. We have the indoor shelter on the east side and then have quite a few events throughout the day onsite and throughout the community. Then again, we use the bus service for. Some of the trips and activities include swimming, arts and crafts, sports and games. Do roller skating, mini golf, movies, Lux Harbor, pizza at Happy Joe's, Stars Academy Library. So they, throughout the summer, are pretty busy just onsite and then taking weekly trips offsite as well. But it's increased in attendance the last few years and a lot of that's through promotion. Had some good camp counselors as well that's helped it grow. And I think we're at kind of where we're at maximum, is that 65 kids. This year, as you see up there, we are still looking for camp counselors. We have a few that are, have hired on, but still looking for more. If anyone's interested, can apply through the city of Burlington. But we have gotten a lot of great response the last few years. Just really excited about the camp and what the city offers through this program. It does run, I didn't mention that there. First day begins on June 4th. First week, they don't have the free lunch, but starting on June 11th is when the free lunch begins. So it's kind of an added bonus of the camp is that June 11th through the August 4th, it is a free lunch for all the kids that attend the camp and we bus them there through the city bus program every day over to Course and back.
Outstanding.
I've heard it's a great program for people that have sent their kids through there.
Any chance to get an adult summer camp?
We'll have to see on that. It is a first through fifth grade age group that we accept for that. But again, encourage individuals that are interested or want to register, go on our website. We do have a Facebook page and also anyone interested in working at it, great experience, whether it's teachers in the summer or college kids coming back. We are still looking for counselors. Please apply at the city's website or at City Hall as well.
Very good. All right, thank you.
Great.
And now we have the fire department annual report.
Thanks for sticking around. I'll be done by seven. So, and I will, it has been, you know, I've been rescuing a lot of cats out of trees, hence all the scratches on my arms here. No. Everybody's been asking me, what have you been doing? Wrestling trees is what I've been doing, so. All right, I'm going to just start on page three, Eric. So just, I, I'm not going to read through here, just a few things of note here. Obviously, one of the big things last year was the SAFER grant and we only have two months of data to share with that from 2017. But that's made a huge difference in our department. The other thing there is compared to 20 years ago, we're at 100% increase or double our call volume and up 7% just from last year in our calls. So also last year, we hired nine new firefighters. Some of that was due to the SAFER, some was people leaving to fill vacancies. And then also, just to mention, so far this year, we just hired our third this year. So I made a note there that that's a common topic among fire chiefs around the state, that hiring and keeping people is getting harder and harder every year. We're trying, we're after the same pool of applicants. There's a lot of us hiring people from other departments and people moving around, a lot different than it used to be. You know, you kind of got with your department and stayed there, not so much anymore. So we've hired people from Muscatine and Fort Madison. Other departments have hired some away from us. So that's how that works. Page four is our organizational chart. That was as of April 1st. Like I said, we have somebody leaving. Firefighter Seberg, he's on the left-hand side there. He's been with us for a couple of years, or a year. He's moving on. We're replacing him in a couple of weeks. We have 49 total staff, including Dana, our billing manager. Page five, included this, this was in last year's report. And so our average number of years, our average years of service to the city right now is 11.9 years. Last year, it was 13.2 years. So we went down, but of course, we hired nine people. So they all have one year less on the job. We only have 16 people of a department of 48 firefighters that have more than 20 years. So we do generally have a very young staff. And I get that comment a lot when our medics are out on call, like, wow, you had a couple of kids show up. But a lot of them are, a lot of them are, you know, 25, 21, 22-year-old people. Page six, again, that's our territory. I've used this slide several times. That's our, fire is in red, EMS is in blue. Page seven. So our calls for service, the one thing I just wanted to, a couple of things here. There's the 1997 stat. And then basically from 2014 until now, we have added 1,000 calls. So in four years, we went up 1,000 calls. The lower graph there for 2017, those are the national fire incident reporting categories. Every fire department uses those subtitles there for their call type. So obviously, rescue would include all of our EMS calls. That also includes motor vehicle accidents, any kind of rescue out on the river or in there. That's our biggest call type. If I'm going too fast, you have a question, just shout it out. Next page, so fire causes in twenty seventeen. Unintentional would be the, the majority of those. Those are the structured fire calls. Uh, the sixty-five for unintentional, that would include cooking by far our number one cause of structured fires or any fires. Uh, the fire stats down below, for all of twenty seventeen, we had fifty-four residential fires, seventy-one, uh, structured fires, um, going down to line nineteen. So, total fires, one thirty-four. Those are, what, those are calls where we get there and we pull a line off and we actually have something burning. Uh, then there's all the other call types down there. And the reason it says total calls, five thousand two hundred and fifteen, and I've been saying we went on five thousand two hundred and one, is our new reporting system doesn't, normally doesn't include what we call exposure fire. So, if you go to a house fire and also catches the garage on fire, that's two reports. So, it includes those in that fifty-two fifteen. Normally, when we report our fires, we don't include exposures as a separate, a separate incident. Uh, unfortunately, last year, we did have one fire fatality. Tiffany Owens, that was back in May. And that was our only fire death last year. Uh, there's the estimated property damage. Uh, last year from fire was three hundred and sixty-eight thousand. We've, we eclipsed that this year with one, the one fire out on Wildlife Lakes Road that the fire marshal talked about a couple of weeks ago. Page nine, so EMS. And all, all the EMS stats are gonna be a six-year period because we started with a new reporting system, uh, May first. So, just to make it easy, I thought I'd do a six-month period. You could pretty much take everything times two and it should be, uh, fairly in the ballpark, uh, for a year, year figure. So, ambulance transports, uh, obviously, Great River Medical Center in that six-month period, we took fourteen hundred and fifty-six patients there. The University of Iowa, fifty-one patients up there. And then, a various other, these other ones are usually out-of-county transfers. Illinois, uh, all these other different places. Uh, we do somewhere in the range of a hundred out-of-county transfers a year. I think we're gonna see more than that in twenty eighteen. We'll see. And then, just for, people are curious about our patient ages, that's at the bottom there. Page ten, uh, ju- just two things I'm gonna point out here. One is naloxone, and that's Narcan. So, in the six months from July first until the end of the year, we gave Narcan thirty-seven times. And that's what we use for opioid, opioid overdoses. So, that's a lot. We never used to give near that much Narcan, or we're giving that a lot more often. So, in the course of a whole year, we're gonna be somewhere up close to a hundred doses of Narcan. And then, the other one is vecuronium down there. It's only six doses, but I don't know if anybody's familiar with that drug, but that is a paralytic. And so, a lot of people don't realize what some of these, like this, the same kids that I talked about earlier, going out and when they use vecuronium, it's a paralytic. So, you, they give a sedative first and then they give vecuronium. So, they kinda put them to sleep and then when you give vecuronium, they're, they're completely paralyzed. So, they're not breathing, they can't move any muscles. And then, so you have to start breathing for them. And we use it for some breathing difficulty calls, uh, or a major trauma where they have a head injury or something like that. So, it's a scary thing for a twenty-two-year-old to be doing this to somebody because they have to be very good with their skills. So, so, we double that, we'd be giving that about twelve times a year if they're out doing that. Page eleven, so these are the, the initial report that we got from dispatch. These are the call types for EMS. Breathing problems, two hundred and eight. The big one there is falls. We get a lot of calls for falls. So, three hundred and sixty-seven calls in the six-month period were for falls. All right, page twelve, so our training for twenty seventeen, our total training hours were five thousand eight hundred and forty-four, which is slightly up from twenty sixteen. A lot of those hours would be for recruit training. Got nine new hires, you do, we do a lot of recruit training. Uh, twelve hundred and forty-five hours were for EMS, fifteen hundred about for company fire training. Uh, next page, our NFPA seventeen-ten report. Uh, so, the fire response standards per NFPA. A structured fire response, your initial engine company's supposed to be there in five minutes and twenty seconds. That's eighty seconds to go down, put your turnout gear on, get on the truck, and then four minutes to drive there. Uh, we're at about fifty percent in Burlington. Again, that's a lot of the places you can't drive there in the four minutes, so... And we struggle with the eighty seconds, especially at, at night. Uh, the next standard there is the fifteen firefighters on initial response. And that includes, so the, the first initial and then the next group of people are supposed to be there in eight minutes, drive time in the same, uh, eighty seconds to put your turnout gear on. So, nine, that initial should be there in nine minutes and twenty seconds. We're averaging about nine people within that timeframe. Lot of different reasons for that, usually because we have another call going on at the same time. That number will get better with, uh, the more, uh, extra people we have on now with the SAFER grant. So, ambulance usage, uh, this first ambulance here is our, the one that we have down at Central Fire Station, uh, ambulance seven fifty-one. It went on two thousand four hundred and thirty-nine calls last year, which is almost half of the total calls. So, every fire, pretty much it's going on, plus a majority of the ambulance calls do come out of Central, especially before November when we started with the SAFER grant and having the, uh, third ambulance. So, uh, that ambulance is two years old, has fifty-six thousand miles on it. Total cost last year was ten thousand five hundred and sixty-five dollars. And that included about seventy-five hundred dollars worth of fuel. So, very low maintenance cost. Seven fifty-five, that's the one that's out at Station Two, Summer Street. It's a little bit older, has a hundred and twenty-seven thousand miles on it. It is our, our second newest ambulance. Uh, total vehicle costs were eighteen thousand four hundred and that included forty-six hundred dollars in fuel roughly. So, you can see where the older they get, the lot, we spend a lot more money on maintenance. Probably the biggest thing is, we do literally, we kid about this, we're running the wheels off the ambulances. That's probably the biggest expense we do have on these two ambulances is replacing tires. So, about every thirty thousand miles, we're putting new tires on it. It's rather expensive. Uh, fire engine usage, seven twenty-one, getting out of Central Station. That's by far the busiest fire station. That engine went on a thousand and five calls last year. The engine has thirteen thousand miles on it. Uh, we spent about sixty-three hundred dollars on it last year and thirty-five hundred, that was in fuel. Cost of, not, not bad. I just did the math and divided, it's about six dollars a call. So, that, when you think of that big apparatus going out and it's only costs you six dollars every time it goes on a response, that's not bad. Uh, seven thirty-six, uh, Station Two, went on six hundred and four calls last year. It's a two-thousand engine. It's got about forty thousand miles on it. A lot of people say that's, that's really low miles, but I don't have the hours for these. I didn't go look them up. But, the hours is probably as much or more important because when we go to a fire, maybe, you know, two miles away, but that thing's sitting there running at a high engine speed for the pump for hours on hand. So, a lot of times, they do have low miles, high hours, a lot of usage that's not seen in the mileage. Uh, total vehicle cost for that last year was about twelve thousand, uh, twenty-one hundred in fuel. So, somewhere around nine thousand dollars in repairs last year. We do that, have that in the next fiscal year to replace this engine. Uh, it's actually in right now for another, uh, high-dollar repair that wasn't included in twenty seventeen, about five thousand dollar repair. And, so, went on six hundred and four calls last year. As I, it would've went on several more, but it was out of service for different items throughout the year. So, uh, could've had quite a few more. Uh, the other thing is, when I look through the, the reports, a lot of times, we'll just see parts, like we just bought lights or we just bought, uh, a sensor or something like that. So, you see a part chart, but you don't see the labor part. That's because our own guys put the stuff in and we don't keep track of our own hours as far as maintenance and repairs go. So, there's a, probably quite a bit more cost in there that you don't see. All right, page sixteen, so I did a fire department comparison. Looking at where we ended up the year, not where we started. So, with the SAFER grant, we were at forty-five firefighters and you can see where that compares to the, what we usually use as our comparable city. So, um, that's the number of people that are on a shift, that work shift work, the twenty-four on, forty-eight off. Uh, the admin, administrative staff, I, I try to abbreviate stuff to get this all on one page. So, I have, uh, the definitions down there. But, uh, you can see where we have three admin, that's pretty standard. Mason City has five, uh, the number of stations. And then, the minimum staffing is probably the more important of those numbers. You can see where we compare with Clinton, Muscatine and Mason City and the number of calls that each department goes on. I didn't break down the, the call types, but Mason City and Muscatine both do a very large number of out-of-county transfers because they don't have another ambulance there in their city. Like, we have Superior, they're probably taking a thousand out-of-county transfers a year that we don't have to take. So, uh, Muscatine's taking, I think their chief said, they average three and a half transfers a day going either to Davenport or Iowa City. So, they spend a significant amount on that. Uh, the next little chart there shows our, the FP is the, the fire population that we cover and then the AP is the ambulance and then the, the square mileage. So, you can see for fire, we cover the largest population, uh, same for the square mileage. In this Mason City, this huge number for their ambulance population, they cover a county or two next to them that are very rural county, really large, and that's where they get the eight hundred, uh, square miles that they cover. It's a really large, uh, area, rural area. All right, we'll move on to the next page, so our challenges. Some of these carried over from last year. Obviously, training's our big one. A lot of departments, uh, struggle with this, especially when NFPA says, "We want you to get a hundred and ninety-two hours per person, per year in company fire training." That's sixteen hours a month, that's a lot of training. It's not required by law, it's their recommendation. The EMS training right below that was thirty hours. That's required for paramedics to keep up their license. They need thirty hours, you know, sixty every two years to keep their license. So, uh, we definitely get all the EMS training in and the fire, we're, we're doing what we can for that. Uh, we don't have a dedicated training officer. Obviously, we're taking more calls, so it's really hard to train on duty. Rich, Rich Jones was down the other day to teach us a computer, uh, we were looking at what, not opening, uh, emails that had weird attachments and stuff. And I walked, I sat in the first aid and then the second day he came down, I walked by there and there's literally one person in the classroom. Everybody else was out on call. So, it's hard to give a class and, and get everybody together at one time. And then, no fire training facility. I hear this a lot, especially the new guys. They'd really like to have a tower or somewhere to go besides the rec plax or the riverfront or throwing ladders up against our own building. So, we do use, uh, buildings that are gonna be demolished, if we have access to those, we'll use those for training. Uh, community risk reduction or fire prevention, that's Fire Marshal Crook's area. He's pretty much a one-man show. He assigns stuff out as he can, but, uh, we don't do a whole lot of stuff in that area. We'd like to do more. Um, just, I'll skip down there to where it says rentals, 'cause I know we were just talking about that. We're talking about trying to do more nuisance and I'm saying, "We need to do more rentals." And I think our inspectors are great. It's how our program is set up. By that, I mean, we do, uh, single-family and duplex inspections once every five years and then the multifamily or every three years. Well, a lot happens in three years or five years. And we've walked into a place and no smoke detectors. Like, well, I had them, you know, and I got my five-year permit, but new people just moved in last week. They move in, there's no smoke detector. There's no, you know, tenants move in and out of these rentals all the time and they're not necessarily brought back up to what's needed in between tenants. So, that's a problem, a constant problem that we run into. Uh, next page, so recruitment. I've already talked about that, but I didn't say, we had two recruit tests last year. We had a total of eighteen applicants between two tests. So, for a job that I think, and a lot of people thinks, is a pretty good, decent job, you would think you'd have a lot more applicants than that. And then, we continue to lack diversity in our applicants. Out of eighteen applicants, we had one female. That's, that was the, the total of the diversity. Increased firefighter, uh, fatigue and stress, again, that has a lot to do with the calls. However, the third ambulance has made a huge difference. That is taking a lot of pressure, especially off that downtown ambulance. I've talked about some of this stuff from last year. I'll go to the next page for accomplishments. So, like I said, May first, we started a new, uh, reporting software. One of the things that we've struggled with is having one report that can do fire and EMS. We were doing, guys had to do a fire report for fires and EMS report for EMS, two separate things and a lot of times, they have to, so you go to a car wreck, it would generate two reports, a fire report and an EMS report. Years ago, we would count that as two calls. We, we doing that maybe five years ago, we combined, it's one call that gets counted once, but they were still doing two separate reports. Now, it's just one report. That was probably the biggest benefit. The other is it's a cloud-based system where they can come, complete a report on pretty much any device. I can be at home. If I take a call on my way home, I can, when I get home, I can actually do it on my phone if I want to. So, uh, that helps, uh, it has way better analytics. If you, hopefully, you read some of my monthly reports, I started just running the reports right out of there because they're, they're very helpful and they look really nice. So, uh, better tracking of vehicle costs. So, we used to have our costs in multiple places. Now, it's all in one reporting system. So, I can look back, uh, the deputy chief has put about five years' worth of records in there. So, I can look back and see all the fuel costs, all the maintenance costs, all in one spot. And, of course, we've talked a lot about the SAFER grant, that has made a big difference. We've staffed that third ambulance, that's been great. That's been a challenge that we've had on the list here for several years. Increase our daily staffing with that. All right, we decreased, so, for the time period up till right now, as compared to last year, our overtime is down about sixty thousand dollars for that time period. Um, for December, January, this last December and January, our overtime cost was ninety-seven hundred. Last December and January, it was twenty-nine thousand five hundred. So, took a big bite out of our overtime. And for a lot of people that are like, "Great, that's great, we like that low cost." I like that my guys aren't having to decide whether I'm coming in for a twenty-four-hour shift or I can come in for an ambulance transfer. Or while we were here, they just called in seven off-duty guys for a big fire. Well, we got seven off-duty guys to come in. It was a lot harder when people were taking a lot more twenty-four-hour shifts because they would go home and like, "I need some time off." And be like, "You do need time off," you know? So, it's hard to call people in. So, now, a lot of our overtime, very few twenty-four-hour shifts, mostly for fire calls or taking out-of-county transfers. So, very helpful to our department. Last page, so we had five reportable injuries last year, which five is too many, but that's one of our lowest totals ever for our department. So, we've had the most calls ever, but we have a really low, uh, total of injuries. One of those was a repeat from the year before. We had two back injuries, an animal bite, a hand and a foot injury. I don't know what all to attribute that to. Some is we have a lot younger, worse workforce, that helps for sure. We've been, uh, focusing a lot on our fitness down there, which has helped. And then, our bariatric, uh, policy and equipment we instituted a couple of years ago has been very helpful. Uh, we were awarded, uh, besides the SAFER, we got the AFG grant last year for fitness equipment. Uh, there's a picture of that down below, but we, about twenty-five thousand dollars worth of equipment and new flooring, uh, for our gym. Then, I, we do a lot of stuff in the community. We're involved with all the county fire, EMS, the state associations, the nine-one-one board, Henderson County EMS, Mavis Division sixty-two. Of course, we do the free smoke alarm program, a lot of different community events. I didn't have room to stick them all in there. And that's the end of my annual report. Any questions about anything? Feel free to shoot me an email, ask me anytime.
Yeah, thank you so much.
It's up on the city website already and it's also on our Facebook page. People would like to look at that from home, so...
I, I appreciate your monthly reports because I do read every single one of them. So, it gives me an insight as to what, how busy you guys are.
Appreciate that, I'm glad people read it.
Yeah, I, I will say that I do that with all departments, so the, the other department heads are here. Those are very informative, so it was, it, it's something that I appreciate you guys taking the time to do.
This is really snazzy.
Thank you.
Have to use that in your recruitment techniques.
Yeah. I am not the creative one.
I didn't make an ambulance call, my mom fell in Ames yesterday and, uh, the paramedics that showed up, they were very young too.
Yeah.
One of them said he had just, uh, gotten back from the Burlington-Danville area. So, evidently, he has family here.
Yeah, I read a stat the other day, it said fifty percent of paramedics quit after five years. So, that has a lot to do with why I think you see a lot of turnover.
Why, why is that? Is it just real stressful or...
Yes, and a lot of it, I, I think, is because we hire them so young and we need so, and, uh, we're putting two young medics together where they're not really getting a mentor.
Yeah.
I, we have three paramedics with over twenty years on the job. Everybody else has less than that. So, it's like, "We need a senior medic," and we only have three. You know, one, one per shift. Everyone else is still fairly young in paramedicine, so that does not help.
Do they tend to go into other career fields? Is that what they do or...
Yep, some of them, some move on to other fire departments that don't do EMS. We had one go to Charleston, one went up to, up in Illinois here not too long ago. The one that's just leaving, he was going, he's going to Baytown, Texas. The one that's just leaving, he was going, he's going to Baytown, Texas, same, but it's a very similar department, they run fire-based EMS, the ambulance out of there, so.
Well, they're young, we'll blame it on online dating, not on our department, huh?
Well, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, chief.
Next we have appointments, does anyone have an issue?
I read them.
What's, what is the appointment?
It is for low-rent housing.
It was, Jeff's taking over, and...
Jeff has been chair, you need a, one thing that, that I know that you need to get done is to have a vice chair, and I think that's what's supposed to be appointed, because that's supposed to be appointed by the mayor, I just don't know who out of the other four he was looking to do, so that's something that will be on for next week, hopefully if you have a concern about one of the individuals, let Katie or the mayor know. Otherwise he'll, whoever that recommended person is.
It was Kyrie, wasn't it?
It used to be Kyrie. And I would point out, that sheet there, that shows a vacant position, the director. Dan Everhard has accepted that position, do you know when he officially starts? I, I think it's by the end of the month, by the end of May, what? First week of May, so.
I was gonna say Tanner knows.
So that's gonna be a good change to have that position filled.
Yes.
Hopefully get some continuity going, moving forward.
All right, okay.
Just reminder register for the bridge walk, we have about three weeks left for that, I think we have a hundred and fifty, a hundred and eighty, somewhere in there signed up, we'd like a lot more than that, the funds code to help support our parks, and we have the added alternative of the bridge walk this year, for those that aren't big runners but wanna experience the event and walk across the bridge, it's a reduced registration fee of twenty dollars, but you can walk across the bridge, it's about a mile and a half, and, or sign up for five K or ten K.
And going across that bridge if you never have, it is something everyone should put on their bucket list.
I've never noticed that it was any fun crossing the bridge.
Nope. Just because you're running. For walkers, it's fun.
This year has a little bit of different twist, too, beside, just besides the walking portion, what else are you doing, Eric?
Well, the race starts a little later at ten, ten AM for the race, and then eleven AM for the bridge walk, and then following, during and following, we have Steamboat Days is sponsoring a kind of after-party race party, live music starting at ten fifteen. The race starts at ten, live music starts at ten fifteen, they'll have games and food vendors and things to do down there at the port while you're waiting for those you're watching, or for runners after they're finished, to be able to relax and enjoy and have a good time. So, that's open to the community, anyone else that wants to come down, watch and run, or just come down and experience that as well, but encourage as many people as possible to sign up for the race or bridge walk, I guess.
Thank you.
Yeah. Speaking of running or walking, this weekend is the Cinco de Naco, so I, I signed you up, just kidding. It's a run, run-walk, it starts at Parkside Brewing Company, so it's this Saturday, May fifth, and it's for a great cause, so you bundle up like Heidi, those of you that are born before nineteen sixty would know this old movie, Heidi bundled up and everything she owned, and then her, her aunt took her up the mountain to live with her grandfather, so then as you do one lap, you down a beer and remove a layer of clothing, and then you do another lap, and you down a beer and you remove a layer, layer of clothing, and the clo- clothing is donated to hopefully yours.
Is it a team event?
It can be.
All right. I'm your man.
Yeah, so it sounds, it sounds really fun and unique and something we haven't had in this area yet, so check that out.
John, I hope you wear a lot of clothes.
So also, tomorrow, May first, is Downtown Clean Sweep, so meet at the Art Center, I believe it's at one, I didn't write the time down, I apologize for that. Bring a stiff broom, dustpan, scoop, bucket, gloves, and help clean up the streets, and then we're looking for volunteers, coming up is a wonderful event, Snake Alley Criterion, Memorial Day Weekend, this is European-style bike racing at its finest, if you've never seen it, please show up for it, Randy Wright is trying to assemble his team of volunteers early instead of last minute, so phone number for Randy, three one nine nine three one four five one zero, that was again, volunteers for the Snake Alley Criterion.
The only thing I have is try to encourage people to step forward and help us paint the bench, benches downtown, they haven't had any applicants, I think part of it is because they have to prep them, so I have reached out to a couple of different outfits trying to look, we can't prep them, and, and that way people could paint them, so we are gonna work on that, I'd hate to lose that program. It is our signature, like Herky Hawk in Iowa City, our benches are really elegant downtown, so please, please consider painting one, thanks. I have nothing.
Citywide cleanup, you're finishing Tuesdays?
Tuesday's route is done.
And so you start Wednesday's route this Wednesday? So is that, that progresses over the next couple of weeks? Nick?
We have some pending river rising coming here on Saturday, it's projected at fifteen, or is that Monday, it's Monday, fifteen-five. My concern is what I've seen up north as well, Dubuque is gonna jump up another two and a half foot projection-wise, assuming that correlates, I don't know if it does foot for foot, that would take us to about eighteen foot. We start seeing water in the north boat ramp at about sixteen-five, I've discussed with S and G Construction about having some concrete poured to be able to put the HESCO barriers on the north side, should we need them, because if it's, if it gets too high too late, we're not gonna be able to get in there and put those there, so. We've been working on a contingency plan, you'll also see me, if you watch the news tonight, whatever Channel Six is, I didn't know I was being interviewed, but I'll, I'll be on the news.
But the camera.
The camera wasn't.
Right, I'm wearing, I was wearing sunglasses, too, so, but.
Not that that really matters, but, anyway.
It's a Monday.
We've, we've worked on a, we've worked on a plan, so it's.
Mobile Six fan, didn't throw you off. Man that said Channel Six News didn't.
I, no, I, I was kinda, I was told last minute that they were coming down there, I didn't, anyway. It's a long story that I'm gonna cut short.
He's trying to give us an excuse for what came out of his mouth.
What?
Did you at least comb your hair?
Does it look bad right now?
Yeah, it's a must.
We love you, Nick, seriously, we don't know what I'd do with, what we'd do without you, you do a great job, but it's fun to give you a little bit of a hard time, I mean, we don't have Doug anymore, and I'm not really ready to give Dennis a hard time yet, so.
I didn't, I didn't have anything else, I do get to do the radio on Wednesday.
Problem?
Oh, I don't need to, if you don't want me there, that's fine.
Oh, absolutely.
All right. See y'all are up next week.
Okay.
All right. That's it, thank you.